There was a motion on the table by Ms. Winger to actually, uh, to move this item forward. Mr. Caleb, uh... Came forward with a, uh...Bruce, you want to come up here? What was your action, sir, in the first?
My action was to call a point of law that the...it would be in violation of an existing city ordinance and discussion under our current rules of order allows a citizen to do that if discussion on the item, even though it's been motioned and seconded, if discussion has not begun.
So there was a motion on the table?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCormick?
I don't find anything in our Rules of Order about rising to a point of law. I do find a point of order, certainly, but not a point of law, and the legal discussion is not listed in our Rules of Order, neither is it listed in my copy of Robert's Rules of Order.
Have you...are you talking about in the city Rules of Order, the existing city?
I'm talking about the city Rules of Order.
I think, Mr.-
It's under objection to consideration...oh, excuse me, may I speak?
Yes.
It's under objection to consideration that a citizen may object to the consideration of a matter by council when the matter is in question, and that is what, uh-
That's what I did.
Mr. Smiley Caleb has done.
If you would...Mr. McCormick, if you would like to refer to it as law or order, that is my possible transition of words, but the effect of the objection is entirely the same, that it is against an existing ordinance that is on our books, which should be repealed before you...instead of breaking it.
That's true, but I'll amend the motion to delete the city secretary from those people being named as department heads and take action later on to-
Are we talking about that amendment to the motion after we get into it?
Yes.
Point of order, sir, we need to vote on Mr. Caleb's objection to consideration.
He did call it and-
We have a motion on the floor, first of all. There was a motion to have the article addressed, then there was your move to pull it, if I remember right.
No, I said it first, and then she went in with the motion.
But then, then my point was that I appeal to a vote, so I'm appealing...I appealed the mayor's decision to a vote of the council. I think that needs to be heard before anything else, uh, because if you made your statement that you were pulling it before she made her motion, then there was nothing for her to move on. So I think the appeal of the vote has to be heard. The motion, the motion to consideration does not include a point of law. A motion for consideration is well defiled in our Rules of Order, and it does not cover a point of law. So I think Mr. Smiley is mistaken on his point of law argument with regard to an objection to consideration.
Ms. Scott?
Whichever, we need to get on with it.
It just says that any citizen may object to the consideration of a matter of council when the matter is in question, which was in question about its legality, is first introduced before debate. Any objection to consideration of a matter by the council shall be submitted to a vote without discussion. So we've already violated that because there's been a lot of discussions since Mr.-
Okay. Mr. Brennan, has that statute been violated now with what we're talking about on this particular motion?
Which statute been violated?
The one about the...we've already talked and got into discussion regarding this is whether this is even legal before we get started?
Well, if this ordinance is enacted in its present form, you're going to have two conflicting ordinances regarding the city secretary's position in hiring and firing and so forth. I understand Ms. McCormick is now attempting to amend the motion, although he didn't make the motion. I think Ms. Winger made the motion.
He asked for a consideration of motion by the mayor.
Yeah, well, yeah, he wanted...you said to pull the item. He said he wanted to appeal that.
Okay. I'm pulling the item.
And then, Mr....yeah, you did pull it, and then Ms. Winger made a motion, and he appealed your decision. I don't know which one exactly went first, but they were close, and then Mr. Caleb came up here and came up with another objection. It seemed to me like if you want to unravel this thing, you probably need to vote on the appeal request by Mr. McCormick first.
Okay.
And then, second, act on the objection that Mr. Caleb made, and then get back to whether there's going to be a motion and a second and all that stuff.
Okay, all right. So let's...Douglas, there's nothing to talk about right now. We have a motion on the table to...that he came up to, uh, that Mr. McCormick brought up in order to appeal the motion, so there needs to be a vote on that item.
What we're voting on is the mayor's decision to pull it, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So we vote to overrule or to sustain?
Do we have a motion and a second? You made the motion, where's the second?
I move that we...
You don't.
Uh, overrule the mayor's decision to pull the item.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, all right. So the motion stays on the table.
And then you-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I object to the consideration of this question.
Okay.
That needs to be voted before discussion.
All right.
What's the objection again?
I object to this on the bounds that we will have two conflicting ordinances regarding the city secretary, and a city secretary is already a municipal officer, and therefore there's a conflict in making them a department head.
Mr. Brennan, can they amend something like that when it isn't on the budget, I mean, isn't on the agenda to do so with an ordinance, I mean, with an amendment to the ordinance?
Well, she's objecting to consideration of this, of the thing that's on the agenda, so, yes, she can do that.
Okay.
We need to vote on my objection first, and then we discuss-
Okay, we need to vote on the objection.
Overrule the objection to the consideration.
Do we have a second on the...oh, we don't have to.
It does not require-
We don't have to. It requires a vote in order to move forward.
Okay.
What is the vote about?
If you vote yes, then you vote to not consider it. If you vote no, you want to consider this item.
Thank you.
Okay, before we vote, I'd like to remind that there's two members of council that are lawyers and also answer to the state bar, and this item is being taped, so whether or not it's legal or not, I want to bring that to your attention, just in case it isn't.
Point of order, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Mr. Brennan?
Point of order, we need to take a vote before we can do anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, correct. So let's take a vote to see if we're going to move forward with this? The vote is whether we're going to move forward with the original amendment that you talked about.
If you vote yes, you want the matter taken off the agenda. If you vote no, you want to talk about the item. I'm objecting to considering the question because I believe that it is illegal. It will create a conflicting statute regarding our city secretary and potentially conflicts with state law. So I want it pulled from the agenda. If you vote yes, you want to pull it from the agenda with me. If you vote no, you want to consider this item tonight.
And I want to remind everybody that there's two sitting attorneys on this council, and they both answer to the state bar. So whether or not it's legal or not, we'll move forward and find out.
But we're only voting on whether or not we're having discussion on this.
No, this is an acting item. It says so right here.
Whether we're moving forward.
The vote is not for whether we're approving this. The vote is whether we will be discussing this.
Whether we're moving forward on the item, that's correct, Mr.-
But it's not whether we're approving it or disapproving it. We're going into simple discussion.
Whether we're even going to talk about it, and I'm warning you, this is against the law, so what are we talking about? We have been...there's two attorneys that believe it's against the law. There's the one that didn't. All in favor? All opposed? So we move forward. Minnie, was the tape on? Okay, was it on five minutes ago? Okay, so we have documented proof that they want to move forward. Okay, all right. Okay, so we're going to move forward with this item. It is considered an act upon ordinance number 20180710B, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Department, Section Two, One-Nine, Department Heads, to designate department heads. Mr. McCormick?
Yes. I'd like to move to amend to delete the city secretary from the persons designated as department heads. I would point out that I discussed this matter prior to submitting the agenda item with Mr. Brennan, who didn't bring up any illegality at that time, and I agree that if we pass it in its current form, that that would not be consistent with the requirement to amend the city council, city code, as it stands at the moment. Deleting the city secretary from the department heads, I think, resolves that issue, so I'd move to amend to delete the city secretary.
Mr. Brennan, can we-
Second.
Mr. Brennan, can we change the law in midstream like that, as far as the item on the table is concerned, to conform to?
You're not changing the law, Mayor. Was there ever a second to Ms. Winger's motion to adopt this ordinance? I don't think I heard a second to the motion to adopt it.
I didn't hear a second. Minnie, was there a second to Ms. Winger's?
We didn't have that motion yet.
You made the motion.
He made the motion, I seconded it.
No, you made the motion in the beginning, and I saw the tape.
I'll second it.
You know, this is the third time that this has come to council, and every time it comes, it's always reworded in a way where we get into these situations like this. I'm wondering why we should even move forward with it anyway, but what do I know? I don't have a vote.
That's right.
It's on the table now, Mayor, because it's been moved and seconded, and then I understand Mr. McCormick has moved to amend it. We're waiting on a second for that amendment, I guess.
We have an amendment on the second of Mr.-
Ms. Winger seconded it already.
Ms. Winger did.
Okay. Then the discussion is on the amendment, I guess.
Discussion is on the amendment. Will you repeat the amendment, please, sir, so we'll know where we're at?
The amendment is to delete the city secretary from those persons named as department heads.
Everybody understand the amendment?
Yes, we're in discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Brennan? Does the amendment satisfy the objection that this agenda item conflicts with an existing city ordinance specifically, ordinance two dash two six zero?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Mr. Brennan? If...is this a legal way to overturn an existing ordinance?
Well, with the amendment, there's not an ordinance being overturned. Y'all are just expanding the definition of what a department head is, and with the amendment, the only addition is the finance director, which I guess y'all can do.
So there's no violation of law or the no violation of ordinance two dash two six zero with this subsequent amendment?
I don't think so. What is two six oh? Is it the one about the city secretary?
It's the ordinance that Mayor Smiley Caleb mentioned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's one dash one six zero.
Are you calling a point of order?
Yes, point of order.
Okay.
Now we're at one dash what? Has he mentioned two dash two six zero? You're saying one dash one six zero?
I'm sorry, it is two...two dash one six zero is appointed the city secretary. Two dash one six one is the duties of the city secretary. I apologize.
Thank you. I go back to Mr. Brennan.
If Mr. McCormick's amended motion is to carve out the city secretary from this new ordinance, then I believe it's a legal ordinance, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Good, may I speak? Mr. Brennan, what is your opinion on the possibility of this violating our city manager form of government by having city council members appoint department heads versus the city manager having that as part of his responsibilities under city manager form of government?
Well, I mean, my opinion is this is a backdoor way of eroding the power of the city manager to make these appointments, because currently, the city manager appoints the finance director without the consent and advice of the city council. Currently, he does have advice and consent requirement for the police chief, fire chief, public works director. So I think this is a backdoor way of the council getting control of one more appointment that it doesn't currently have.
So your opinion, it's a gray area. If put before a judge, it could go either way.
Well...
They're taking a backdoor direction of superseding the city manager's authority.
Actually, I disagree with your opinion, Mr. Brennan. The fact is that the current code does not define specifically who the department heads are, and the definition of department heads in the code is broad enough to include a great number of people in addition to those people which normally you would think of as department heads. It could include everybody who has anything to do with creating or receiving a record, because that's the only definition presently in the code. Anybody who heads an office, is in charge of an office, that creates or receives records is a department head under our existing code. This eliminates all of that clutter and makes it clear who the department heads are. The finance director and the city secretary were named because they are crucial to the operation of the council. We can't do anything without good financial information. It's clear that the finance director both creates and receives records. The same is true of the city secretary. She maintains all of the records of the city, all of the meeting minutes, takes all those notes and minutes, and creates those records. So both those people are department heads under the terms of the current code, the definition that's contained in our code as it exists. So this actually limits the term to department head to those five or six people who are key people in the operation of the city. It does nothing to reduce the city manager's authority. As a matter of fact, it makes clear where the limits of the council's authority end rather than where putting more burden on the city manager. Just isn't so, folks. Sorry about that.
Why...can I ask a quick question, and this is something that's bothered me? Why would you want to...why would you want to take a political...two political people who have the power to fire the city manager and put them with him in a situation to where you were deciding on apartment heads, I mean, department heads? Meaning, if he decides that he wants Frank Paul, okay, to be a department head, and you strongly suggest that he didn't, that doesn't smell right to me, because then you have power to-
There's no suggestion of the sort.
I don't agree with that. I think there is a suggestion.
The problem is that I wouldn't select Frank Paul for dog catcher, but that's a whole nother question.
No, well, that isn't the subject. The subject is-
Whoever he selects, he has to come to council to get approval and advice and consent. How the council exercises advice and consent is a matter for council's consideration and determination, not Mr. Rappley's, not Mr. Brennan, not yours.
So in other words, what you're telling is the trio could take over the whole government of the city?
Not at all.
That's what I hear.
Not the government of the city. The fact is-
That's what I hear.
That we have essentially a runaway mayor and a runaway city attorney, and there needs to be some limitations on where your power ends. I don't think you were elected king.
[laughing]
So let's...I'll call the question. Let's go ahead and vote on it.
Call the question and go ahead. Unfortunately, sir, there's people signed up to speak. Would you like to cut them out of speaking?
No, let's hear them.
Okay, I was just curious. Calling the question means is we're going to get to minutes later, when Ms. Winger did it last time, and I abided by Robert's Rules. Next thing you know, a letter goes out that says the mayor didn't stop. He could have stopped everything. Well, you know what? I'm stopping it now. How do you like that? All right, so with that said, let's move on to item number two. There is a motion, a second on the table. We went through everything we did, and Mr. Caleb, you're signed up to speak, sir, for three minutes.
Obviously, after all the discussion, I threw my first set of notes and comments away. One thing that I would remind council specifically is a city attorney's opinion is an affirmative defense for any malfeasance that you might do. Having any council member, attorney or not, who is relying on their legal opinion for the council's advice is relinquishing that affirmative defense.
Thank you, Mr. Caleb. All right, next on the agenda is Frank Paul.
First, I'd like to say to Councilman McCormick, I'll start my dog catching on Carrollwood. I'm sure there's some issues over there could be taken care of. I believe this is improper. I'm going to call it what it is, what I see it is. When you look at number two, and then you drop down to number six, it's obvious what is going on here. They want...in this particular case, they say that they want to do this to bring stability to our government. Stability. We've got stability...we've had stability up until the last couple of months. There's nothing wrong. We got great department heads, everything's taken care of, and if you're so adamant about the fact that it gives the right to do it for the secretary and the finance officer, what...then why exclude her? I mean, you know, these meetings would go a lot shorter, and we wouldn't have to be concerned if y'all quit trying to do things to personally bring extra control to your little agenda items, whatever they may be. We're wasting a lot of time here trying to just change things to give you more control. And again, I say, you talk about stability, I'm looking at the lack of stability in the last two months up here with three of you, and you know it, and I know it, and you know what you're doing, and you start looking down to item number six, and it's pretty obvious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Next person on the agenda is Brother Dooling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. Again, I did notice that the packets you all have are 134 pages. There's no way I was going to download that on my computer and print it out. Can't afford the paper every meeting twice a month. So I don't know what the text is. I'm sort of piecing it together here, because Mr. McCormick says, oh, well, no, that's not what it says. We're not doing that at all. And then somebody else says, well, yes, you are. I don't understand why you hire a city man...I think if this is what you want, and you have the control of the city now, then you ought to get rid of the city manager form of government. But you know what the other option is? A strong mayor. So do you really want that? I don't think so.
I don't want it either.
Well, but what I'm saying is those are the two types. So you have a manager so that you employ a professional manager who can hire and fire and run his show...shop, I meant, not show, shop, the way that he determines is professionally correct. Why would you want to insert yourself in that whole process? I just don't understand it. And I do agree with Mr. Paul that when you put six with it, and we'll come to that, I've signed up for that too, but city council don't need to be sitting in on Mr. Rappley's hiring decisions. It's just violative of the city manager form of government. And I have to say, what it's beginning to look like, and I supported certain candidates, this is just a raw power play that does not serve the citizens of Castle Hills well. Things were much better before May of this year, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brother Dooling. Okay, next on the item is John Squar.
Before I begin, Mr. McCormick, I think you owe Mr. Paul...sorry. I think you owe Mr. Paul an apology. Attacking a citizen from the dais is just...that is not respectful of the dais, and so I'm really disappointed you did that to Mr. Paul. You know, when I put together my thoughts, the city secretary and the...I guess they're being called the finance director, which I didn't realize we even had a finance director. I thought we had a finance officer, was on the agenda item, and I guess I'm concerned in that if you look at a director...a director manages...manages it from the Webster's dictionary. One that supervises, controls, or manages. Well, city secretary is a very important position, granted, but there's not a management aspect in that in regards to people, and so I just...I believe it's a...I believe we're going down a bad path on that. I gotta...I also have to concur with Brother Dooling. He was dead on right about this of being a power play. I think we hired a city manager. We need to let the city manager do his job. If you don't like the city manager, then fire the city manager, if that's what y'all want to do, if that's what your end goal here is. But this should not be a power play. I live in a city manager form of government. If you want to change it, come to me as a citizen and allow me to have a voice on that as a citizen if we're going to change our form of government to a mayor, to a council form of government. So I also look at...I noticed on the agenda item you had cons, and there was no cons. I got to believe if you want to promote these people to directors or department heads, that position really should have staff, number one, but second of all, I think you're going to increase the cost of that position to the public, and I thought y'all wanted to try to save the city some money. If you start elevating these positions, you're going to elevate the salaries, you're going to take more money out of my pocket, and I'm not going to see it going to the streets. And the infrastructure is where I want to see this money go going forward, and not necessarily and unneedlessly into staff's hands for creating false positions that don't need to exist. Our form of government is sound, our form of government that we have in the city works well as it's designed. I just...I don't think we should be monkeying with it like you guys are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squar. Next on the list is Pam Ferris.
Pam Ferris.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. That's it. Okay, we've had discussion. Minnie, would you like to tell us where we're at now?
Call for the vote.
Vote's already been called for. Minnie, where are we, and what are we voting on? I'm not sure.
Oh, you want to have more discussion?
Did you want to say something, Douglas?
I'd like to have a little more discussion.
Okay, with that said, Ms. Winger, call for the vote. Do you retract that, Ms. Winger? Oh, that's right. That's my decision. I forgot. Thank you. Douglas, go ahead.
This goes to Mr. Brennan. We have the phrase, and we find it in the Constitution, advice and consent of the council. As it was put in the Code of Ordinances for our city, how do you interpret what advice and consent means?
Just the same that we're watching right now with a Supreme Court nominee. The executive nominates a person for a position, and then the council considers the nomination, would be my understanding.
I've watched how new department heads have come into existence, and I find it very interesting, because for so long, we didn't have change in department heads. It's almost like something very unusual. But I put my head in the door when we were searching for a fire chief, and as I saw it, for what it was worth, it was...I'm not really sure who was doing what. I know you had a lot of the fire department there, and the former fire chief making an opinion. Would that have been an appropriate time for any council member, just simply to go in and to see what was going on and sit as a member of the audience and participate?
Is that a question for me? I don't know. You know, all I know is that the process of advice and consent that we've had, I guess, in our national or federal constitution for a couple hundred years is a step process. The executive nominates the person for a position, and then the body that has to consent to it reviews the nomination, and they chew it over, and then they either vote it down or vote approval of it. To say somebody from the federal senate should go over to the president and say, hey, you know, while you're thinking about this position- you know, while you're thinking about this position, a nominee, I want you to do such and such." I mean, I don't think that's illegal, is, you know, if the executive wants it that way, or is willing to work it that way.
It was the advice and consent phrase that caught me, and I wanted this to come for discussion. That's why I have my name on this thing. Is there anything improper for council people, when we go out and we're looking for a chan, a replacement for a department head, to go to those meetings, as they are called, I assume Mr. Rapley is, well, I'll just say, the previous city manager would call meetings, is it improper for a city council member to go to those called meetings and to sit in the audience and watch? And maybe say something?
Well, I don't know. You know, my assumption is that when you have a city manager, you hired him to make appointments or recommendations for office holders, he, he can do that however he feel it's appropriate. If he wants to invite city council folks to come chew the fat with him about it, I'd say that's fine, as long as he don't do it in quorum numbers. But I, I really think it's up to him to decide how he's gonna arrive at a recommendation.
So lacking an invitation, you would say that council members should not go and watch the process?
Yeah, I, I don't think a council member ought to interject themselves into the process without the request of the executive.
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on.
Mr. Smiley made some comment, I don't know whether you remember it or not, it sort of evades me right now. I was gonna ask you, did what Mr. Smiley say have any validity at all to what he had to say?
Well, it, it turns out that in the Rules of Order, there is a, a provision that says any citizen may object to consideration of a matter by the council when the matter in question is first introduced and before debate. And then the follow-up to that is, once that objection is made, the council shall vote on whether or not to, to approve that, the citizen objection. But y'all have had two votes so far on whether or not this topic is coming forward, and both of them have been in favor of consideration of the topic, so I feel like it's on the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Cities that you've been a city manager, a city attorney for, has been Alamo Heights and Hollywood Park and wherever else, has this ever come up?
This objection thing, or the, the process of?
The process.
Well, in the city manager, in Alamo Heights, the city manager fills his role. I mean, he, when there's a position that's vacant, whether it's a fire chief, police chief, whatever, he goes out and conducts a search and makes a recommendation to the council, and then they consider it. In Windcrest, they have the same system. There's been a lot of political turmoil out there in the last couple of years, and, and there's been some degradation of it, just like there is here right now.
So, so since we're a general law city, and the packet that I received, that little phrase stuck out, we cannot do anything unless it's prescribed by code.
That's what Mr. McCormick says. That's what Mr. McCormick says.
Are we at that point right now?
On, on this motion that's on the table right now? No, I don't think so.
So you don't think, you think this motion is a?
It's a legit, his, his amended motion is a legitimate motion, in my opinion.
It's a legitimate motion, and you feel this is not an, an improper, moving out of the boundaries of what we are limited to do as a general law city under 5,000 people?
Yeah, no, it's, it's sneaky, and it's backdoor, but it's okay legalizing.
Sneaky and backdoor?
It is. It's, it's a, it's a backdoor degradation of the city manager's authority to pick a finance director. Right now, today, the finance director or finance officer, whatever it is, is, is a subordinate employee selected by the city manager. This motion that Mr. McCormick has made will change that to where the finance director is now gonna be a department head, which is kind of a farce. But anyway, it's gonna be a, a department head that will then be, have to follow the department head rules, which is that that position can't be filled without the advice and consent of the city council.
Sneaky and backdoor from a runaway lawyer.
We've had a slew, since I've been here, we've had about a dozen city managers, and the best one that we ever had, in my opinion, was Mike Shands.
I agree.
Now, I can't see, I use him as an example of what we should have as a city manager. I can't see Mike Shands being intimidated at all by two council members, I don't care how big they are, or fat they are, or loud they are, or whatever, by them sitting in on a meeting. But you think that there are other city managers who might be intimidated by this?
Point of order.
Yeah, and Doug, go ahead.
I'm just trying to find out.
Douglas, you're off, you're off bat here. You are attacking our city manager right here in front of the deal, and also in public. I have seen personally, and letters sent out by certain council members sitting on this dais, calling him insufficient, he did the wrong thing, he doesn't do what he does, this would have never happened if so-and-so did it, and that is not right. You voted for this gentleman too.
I didn't send that letter out, and I'm not talking about that letter.
Oh, of course you don't want to talk about it. I wouldn't either.
Point of order.
I'm asking Mr. Brennan, simply, this is all determined upon this, the city manager you have with regard to whether or not he would be intimidated or not? I must admit, listening to all this reasoning, I do, I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, let me finish just a second, because you may be happy with what I have to say, you may not, I don't I like the idea of advice and consent, I like the idea of the city council doing this. However, I've changed my mind on this thing. I think this, the sword can go two ways. You can have two people that you like, that you think will make sound recommendation, but once you change them, you may get two people you cannot stand. And I'm less inclined now than I was when I agreed with Mr. McCormick that this was a good idea, simply because there are people that will follow us. And I'm not too certain about anybody who follows this, because no one knows. So, I'm, I'm finished.
We have a call for the vote right here from Ms. Winger.
But wait, I want, since we're having discussion, I wanted to say something about?
So you're taking back your call for the vote?
I already did that.
That's fine, okay, that's fine, okay.
Okay. Mr. Brennan made the point that advice and consent is exactly what is going on right now in the United States with the Supreme Court justice nomination. In this case, as everybody knows who's watching the news, the senators who vote on it are each interviewing every, all of the appointments. So they will be interviewing the, the, the na, that the president has appointed. And that is all we're talking about. This is our system of government. That's the way we operate. And I don't know what you were having second thoughts about, Douglas, because you like the idea of advice and consent. This is a position that is critical to the council as well as to the other departments who, who need to have the information that comes from that department, which is the finance department. And we don't currently have that. So what is the difference, since it's Mr. Brennan's own analogy, that we would be involved at that level?
Would you like to take a five-minute break to go over your plan?
Much the same way that the senate does.
Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to, hang on, would you like to take a five-minute break to go over your plan?
Go over what?
Well, it seems like she doesn't like what you're thinking, Douglas, is what I hear.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, you know, what's going on in the US senate is all well and good, but we are a, a council city manager form of government. According to all of the literature from the Texas Municipal League, when you choose a mayor, a, a council city manager form of government, that plan, council has no administrative duties. The manager has unilateral, unilateral authority to hire and fire department heads, and this is an attempt to undermine and take away authority that our city manager has in doing his job for our city.
But we currently have advice and consent.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, why not?
I have a question on how Ms. Winger would know how Mr. Gregory feels about this item one way or the other, considering it was Mr. Gregory and Mr. McCormick who put it on the agenda. So if Ms. Winger has discussed this issue with you, then, and she knows how you feel about it, then I have serious concern that perhaps there's been an open meetings violation about how she knows how you feel about this particular item if you and Mr. McCormick are the ones that discussed it to put it on the agenda.
I'll answer that question. Since you haven't attended council meetings for years, like I've been here for years, I've put my name to motions that I ended up not voting for many times before, simply to get a discussion going. Now, she is not deaf, obviously, and she's heard what's going on. So if you think that's a violation of the open meetings that we discuss at the dais on an agenda item, it's not. So I may agree with this particular item, which only, is, the only thing this particular item is saying is to elevate the finance director to a department head. That's all it's saying. What it says about number six, or eight, or 10, or 12, when we come to that, I intend to vote on that. And, but this is solely saying to elevate one person to department head status. That's all this is saying. It's not saying about, we're gonna sit and do this, and that's all this one is saying. Further on, there's more stuff, but this one, simply in case this hasn't been read, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, amending the city code of ordinances, so on and so forth, department heads to designate department heads and setting an effective date. That's all this does. It does not talk about overview, it does not say anything like that. This is just elevating one person to a department head status, that's it. And on that, I agree with.
What department is she heading? How many people work under the finance officer? Mr. Greg.
How many people are under the finance state?
Who will she manage?
Who will she manage? She's the department head of what department?
But the depart, the department head, as Mr. McCormick has clearly defined, is exactly what she does. If Mr. McCormick would like to read that to you again, you'll see that it's not the numbers of people, it's what they do.
Yeah, let's hear it again, please.
The definition of department heads contained in section 2-300. It's the only place that I could find in our code where department head is defined. There is no place in, in the code, the Castle Hills code I'm talking about now, where department heads are defined or identified specifically as one group or another. Mr. Brennan said, says that the finance director is not currently a department head. Well, I think that's arguable, and I think that you can interpret department head according to this definition as being lots of folks. Anybody who, who is in charge of an office which creates or receives records. That's pretty broad, folks. That could be almost anybody that works for the city.
Mr. McCormick, which section was that again?
Excuse me, ma'am, I was speaking. If you don't mind, I'd like to be allowed to finish my comment.
Yes, sir, no doubt. Hang on.
The, the identification of department heads limits the council's reach to advice and consent of certain, certain positions. Now, because there has been so much discussion, and some, some very cogent discussion, as a matter of fact, and pertinent with regard to the way the city council is, is proposing under this agenda item six, to assist the city manager with, with participation in, in the interview and review of applications, I think, I think it's probably appropriate that I withdraw my support of item six, and hope that we can get this particular item through to limit the number of people that we identify as department heads. Identifying somebody as a department head, by the way, doesn't cost any money. It's just a piece, it's just a line on a piece of paper. It doesn't increase their pay, it doesn't increase their stature or status, it just recognizes the fact that these people do a key pers, a key job for the city. And for that purpose, we, we identify them as department heads, and the council can, can exercise advice and consent as the current code allows us to do, and requires that the city council make these appointments with the advice and consent of the council. Doing that from the dais after the, after the city manager has done his due diligence with, with the individual, I think is a pertinent way to do it. I think that the arguments that have been made against us participating in the interview and review of applications, I think are probably cogent and reasonable. I think Mr. Brennan has already made the comment that the amended motion does not violate the law, does not change the, the code without a proper ordinance. And so I, I continue to support this motion as amended with the deletion of the city secretary.
I, I just have a quick question. Douglas, you've been around a long time, I have too. Have we ever hired or elevated an employee that doesn't manage people?
Well, what you're talk, well, we've rarely had change in department heads. I mean, I can only think of one, two, two, in the 15 years I've been here. And Mr. Harada was simply the guy who was there, left, and Mayor Harper said, well, she wanted Mr. Harada to be the department head, and he became the department head. And when we, we changed, I guess we've had three. When we changed fire chief once, and the, and the police chief twice, but the police chief was the same, he just came in. So I can only think in 15 years of four times. So it's, rarely comes up.
But we never, but we've never done that with, that didn't manage people.
Well, I think managing money is probably as important as managing people, because it is clear, if you do not have somebody who is top-notch in the oversight of managing money as a finance director is supposed to do, then you, you come into, you come into some problems. The city treasurer, of what I do, is not a finance director. You want to make me finance director? You pay me a good, godly enough amount of money, I'll come over here and do it. But you require, it doesn't, the, the city treasurer doesn't require a professional to do it. I'll look over these things and I ask questions. But a finance director manages a lot of money.
So if you, so if you have a finance director, and then they're ruled over by two members of council and a city manager who those two members of council can control his destiny, how does that work?
Well, as I have just heard from Mr. McCormick, what you're referring to, he is going to pull that item.
Ah.
So I don't think we're gonna get, go down that road tonight.
Don't worry, we're on item two, we got 14 more to go.
Mr. Mayor. First, Mr. McCormick, I apologize for interrupting. You were talking about section 2-300, and I was reading a different section, 2-191, regarding department heads, and so I apologize, I was trying to figure out where you were in our, in our ordinances. In 2-300, it's simply a definition of the term department head. However, if you look at 2-191, it says department heads. Each department head shall be responsible for the administration and direction of the affairs and operations of his department or agency. Subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager, each such department head shall, and then it's got a laundry list of six different things they're responsible for. This indicates to me that a department head is someone who, it's not money, there, there is a substantial amount of employee, employees, assets, or other things that they are managing. If we had Civic Center and we needed Parks and Rec, you'd have a department head in charge of something like that. But what do we have in finance that has multiple people or something that would fit this definition under 2-191?
Call for the vote.
Do you want to call for the vote without hearing Mr. McCormick's answer? If that's so, then I'll rule so. If not, I would personally like to hear if Mr. McCormick would like to answer. If he doesn't, then she called for the vote, which I don't hear anybody else.
I think we've been by call for the vote twice now, so I guess it's probably time to do the vote.
It was before, I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that I followed the rules of order, which she stated in her last letter that I didn't do, okay? So with that said, the vote is called, so, Minnie, would you? So with that said, the vote is called, so, uh, Mini, would you please read the item we're voting on? It's been so long, I forgot.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, amending the code of ordinances, chapter two, administration, article four, departments, section two, one ninety-one, department heads to designate department heads and setting an effective date. The, um, department heads are listed as police chief, fire chief, public works director, and finance director.
Was there an amendment to that?
Yes, the amendment was to remove city secretary. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, three, four.
Three abstentions.
Yes, because they felt like that this was an illegal action, and the attorney and two other attorneys also agreed on that, and we'll find out whether or not that was so in the future, I suspect. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number three.
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction. The, the city attorney, prior to the, the vote on this motion, made the statement that the motion as amended does not violate the law, nor is it illegal.
After the amendment.
After, after the amendment, that's correct. So what we voted on was not illegal, according to our city's, city attorney.
After the amendment, correct. Okay, item number three, I'm pulling that item due to the fact that it is, that Mr. Brennan is not a municipal, that Mr. Brennan is a municipal officer, appropriate practices need to be followed.
I call.
Do I wanna override it?
No, you're wrong. The, uh, I, I have.
Like to override it, Mr. Sir?
I appeal to the vote. Uh, Mr. Brennan is not a municipal officer. We have adopted the, uh, city manager form of government.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, point of order.
Point of order is called, hold on.
We need to take a vote on the appeal before we discuss.
You voted to appeal to move forward, go ahead. The appeal to move forward on this item, yes, is a positive vote to move forward, no is a vote not to. All in favor to move this forward based on the point of order? Okay, all, all against? Three to two, let the record show that it was three to two to move forward on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I object to consideration of the question, based on the fact that this violates local government code twenty-two point oh seven seven, and in my opinion, even the fact that we have a contract with the attorney, the state statute overrides, that statutorily, the city attorney is considered a municipal officer, and that that overrides any ability of a contract to, um, to determine how someone would be terminated.
Sorry, but that's a misstatement of the law, and the applicable paragraph is not two point oh seven seven, but, uh, two, two point, uh.
There's no discussion until there's been a vote on the objection.
Twenty-five point oh seven, oh.
There's no discussion on a point of order?
So he wanted to vote on the point of.
We need to vote on the objection to the question.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the objection, yes, is a, uh, vote with Ms. McLean, no is a vote to, uh, move forward as stated based on her objection of the state law. So with that said, all in favor?
I'm, I'm not clear on the vote.
You don't understand how to vote?
I don't understand.
Mr. Brennan, will you explain to Mr. McCormick how to vote, please?
I understand how to vote, Mr. Mayor, and I don't need the sarcasm, I'll take.
Hi, there's no sarcasm intended, sir.
I'd like, I'd like a clarification on exactly what the vote is.
There's no sarcasm intended, based on what you asked me to do.
Will, let's just go ahead and answer my question.
Would you please, I have the floor.
You wanna continue, you vote no.
Okay, let's go ahead with the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, three to two, we move forward, go ahead.
Okay, since the issue has been raised by Ms. McLean, let me point out where the law is. The law is to be found in, in section two five point oh two, oh five one, and under the, uh, the form of government that we're operating under, which is the city manager form. Once we, once we had that election and chose a city manager, the city manager became the only municipal officer in Castle Hills. All other municipal officers, after a municipal, municipality adopts the city manager form of government.
We have a point of order from the crowd here.
There is no motion to have discussion on, or having discussion about a motion.
That's correct. Mr. McCormick acts, asked to speak on this before we got started, is what I heard.
It's improper, you have to have a motion for discussion.
Thank you for that point of order.
I saw move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Would you please read the entirety, so we know what we're talking about?
Glad to. Resolution number two zero one eight zero seven ten A.
Thank you, brother Dylan.
A resolution by the City Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, that the legal service contract with Mr. Michael Brennan shall not be renewed after August thirty-one, twenty eighteen, and shall terminate on that date. Direct the city manager to immediately issue and publish an open, anybody may apply, request for qualifications to identify persons to be interviewed for the position of permanent city attorney. Is it, the plural is that S is, um, obviously a mistake, the position of permanent city attorney. That is a motion that I saw move.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Discussion, go ahead, sir.
Okay, where I was, was section two five point oh five one. Once the city has adopted the city manager form of government, the city manager himself becomes the only municipal officer. Section two five point oh five one describes the other municipal officers, and says that, and I quote, "Section A, after a municipality adopts the city manager form of government under this chapter, all municipal officers except members of the governing body, which is the council, of the municipality shall be appointed as provided by ordinance." Mr. Brennan has not been appointed by ordinance, and therefore is not a municipal officer. And then he goes on, as an exception, "An elected officer serving at the time of the adoption of the city manager's form of government may continue to serve until the expiration of the officer's term." And that was intended originally to accommodate elected city attorneys, which some cities still may, may practice, I don't know. But we, we don't have that situation. So Mr. Brennan is clearly not a municipal officer, there is no ordinance appointing him a municipal officer, and section two point oh seven seven does not, two five point oh seven, two, two point oh seven one does not apply.
So what did I vote for when I was on council, and I voted to extend Mr. Brennan's contract? Is that not an ordinance, in order to pay him?
If it, if it was, it did not make him a municipal officer. It, you'd have to specify that you were gonna make him a municipal officer, you did not. Extending his contract does not make him a municipal officer. Mr. Brennan, as far as I know, does not claim he was, he is a municipal officer.
Another backdoor attempt.
And I, I've talked to him about that.
Okay. Is that correct, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Scott, did you have any, uh?
Yes, that answers my question, I guess, because under chapter twenty-two, the automatic form of government, type A general law municipality, does list the city attorney as a municipal officer under two two point zero seven one, and has very specific guidelines that must be followed for the remu, removal of a municipal officer. My question is, does chapter twenty-five supersede chapter twenty-two?
And the answer to that, I think, would be yes, isn't that correct, Mr. Brennan?
I'm asking Mr. Brennan.
Uh, my contract says that I can be terminated with or without cause, and, uh, you know, regardless of what the, the law says, whether I'm an officer or not an officer, as far as I'm concerned, the contract I make can be terminated with or without cause. Uh, so I, I, I'm not standing on any officer not, versus non-officer position, uh, status.
I know this puts you in a difficult position, because it is, you are discussing, but I just wanna make sure that if there are certain guidelines that must be followed, um, to terminate your position, that we are doing it properly, and that we are not, um, taking some sort of odd backdoor approach to, um, uh, terminating your position. So in my research of who is a municipal officer, I was looking under chapter twenty-two, and obviously Mr. McCormick was reading under chapter twenty-five. So I'm just trying to figure out if twenty-five supersedes twenty-two.
Ms. Scott, what were those references to section what? The second chapter was twenty-five point oh five one. So I asked Mr. Brennan again. Um, Ms. Scott asked a question. Does one supersede the other? Is it germane whether one supersedes the other?
You know, I, I don't concede that one supersedes the other, and I'm not sure that his interpretation of that thing is right, but as far as I'm concerned, it's not germane, because I think you all have the power to terminate my contract, uh, with or without cause, and I, I, I don't wanna get tangled up in that, whether I'm an officer or not an officer, and all that kind of stuff.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, my concern is that if you are a municipal officer, it takes a supermajority to terminate your contract. If you're not a municipal officer, then it just takes a majority vote to terminate your contract. That's why I'm very concerned under which chapter you fall, because in one situation, it would just take a majority to terminate your contract, in the other situation, it takes a supermajority. So I wanna make sure that the correct, you know, legal, you know, it's taken.
I, I appreciate that, and I think it's an issue that, uh, you might wanna, uh, address more specifically with the next city attorney, but, uh, I made a contract, uh, with the city that I intend to stick with, and that is, I can be dismissed with or without cause, regardless of what the officer status is. I, I waive my right to make that objection.
That was just with a majority vote.
You waive your right.
Yes.
How about the next one, Walt? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. McLean, did you have any comments on this, please?
Well, getting past the arguments about which one supersedes the other one, I would like to know who drafted this resolution.
Okay, who drafted this resolution, please?
I mean, it's a pretty simple, I had nothing to do with drafting any, any of these.
Who drafted this resolution to terminate the city attorney?
Who drafted the resolution? It's a pretty simple answer. It was city secretary, it was Mr. Brennan, it was somebody on council.
It was Mr. Brennan.
Drafted the resolution.
Mr. Brennan, did you, did you draft the resolution to terminate yourself?
No, I reviewed it with Mr. McCormick, but I didn't draft it.
So did Mr. McCormick draft it, and then bring it to you for approval?
Uh, I don't know who drafted it, I assume probably that Ms. Winger did.
Who's listed, who's listed on here as bringing it forward?
I am, Mr. McCormick.
Come on, I am, and Mr. McCormick did, and Mr. McCormick brought it forth.
Okay.
But I would like to ask a question here, 'cause this is a song.
Well, I wasn't finished, nobody has answered my question.
My mistake, go right ahead, excuse me.
Who drafted? It's really simple.
I did the initial draft, but it was Mr. McCormick that, you know.
Who gave you the words, Mini?
That it had the legal.
Who gave you the words to draft it, if you drafted it?
From his adj, from agenda.
Mr. McCormick's?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's some things in here that really concern me. We have a whereas, where it talks about the nature of Mr. Brennan's conduct gives us cause for this action. Well, what action? What, what was the conduct that gave rise to this? The wording is just suspect, given that we understand that he submitted an affidavit to the district attorney's office based on the meeting regarding the French school. So it's a little suspect to me that, what conduct are we talking about? And then, we've adopted this new, one meeting a month, and so we're gonna terminate a contract at the end of August, when we have one more city council meeting where we have to have a city attorney in place in time?
I just did the initial draft as a format, and then Mr. McCormick filled in the wherases and the content. And Mr. Um, city, our city attorney reviewed it for the legal review.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Winger, did you have any comments?
Now, Mr. Mayor?
No, I was, we're going around the way here. Ms. Winger, did you have any comments on this?
I have Mr. Brennan and Ms. McCray.
Oh, uh, Mr. Gregory?
The last time we went out for a city attorney was in two thousand and three. Two thousand and, well, that we initially started. It took, did not take two or three months, it took just a matter of a couple of weeks. If you may remember that, Tim, we interviewed six or seven people, and I was a very enthusiastic supporter of Mr. Brennan at that time. But Mrs. McLean, uh, not Mrs. McLean, Mrs., um, Scott, raises an interesting point, but the, common sense tells you, you've got a very peculiar thing here. If a maj, if a majority of the council does not have confidence in the city attorney, uh, Mrs., well, people on this council are saying, "That doesn't make any difference. We've gotta stick with somebody we don't have, uh, have confidence in. We've gotta muddle through somebody we don't," now, that doesn't make sense, and I can't imagine the law was set up to where councils are going to be stuck with people that they neither voted for nor wanted.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I said, "What conduct are we talking about?" I'd like to know what conduct everybody is so upset by that they want to terminate a contract for one of our employees.
Get to that in a minute, Mrs. McLean. We'll get to that in a minute. I'm, I, now, even though Mr. Brennan has done what I believe he's manned up and done the right thing by saying he doesn't want these type of considerations, he goes by his contract that he signed, of which we've had countless city officers sign similar contracts. I appreciate that for what he's done, however, I want a clarification, because what we do now is precedent for what future councils will do. I wanna know whether or not, what supersedes what. I'm prepared to vote one way or another on having Mr. Brennan go, but I want to know what the law says, and if the law is so peculiar that it says it takes a supermajority when only a majority of, a minority of people like the city manager's advice, I wanna know that, because that's what future councils are going to be stuck with. And I don't know the answer to it, so I would like.
Douglas, it's on public record that Mr. Brennan filed with the AG a complaint on a sitting council member. That is public record, and this could be nothing but retaliation, and then when you have a team of three, okay, with, it seems to be moving forward. Douglas, you of all people, you of all people. I'm embarrassed for you. Now, that doesn't mean anything to you, I know it doesn't, but I'm embarrassed that you would do something like that with someone who's done a great job for us for the past twenty years, and because he saw something that was illegal, moved it forward to the Attorney General, and now, all of a sudden, he's not worth chopped liver.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know that.
That's embarrassing. Mr. Brennan, I apologize.
You know flat out, it's not true.
Half of the city, whatever it means.
You know it, and just because you override me in terms of, you know it's not true. But I would like to know, the, the, the only thing I wanna know is, what ordinance is applicable here? Which, which ordinance do we vote under? A supermajority or a majority? Which one has the legal precedent? That's what I wanna know. That's in question right now. Tell you, my opinion is that Mr. Brennan's contract essentially waives all the, all the applicability of twenty-two point oh seven one, if it were applicable. I do not believe it's applicable, because we now have a city manager form of government, there's only one municipal officer, and that's the city manager. No other municipal officers have been appointed in accordance with twenty-five point oh five one, and so there are no other municipal officers besides Mr. Rapley. That means Mr. Brennan is not now a municipal officer. His contract, I believe, waives the applicability of twenty-two point oh seven one. I don't think it's, it's pertinent to go in, into any claims of, of cause in public. Uh, if we, if we needed to do that, I think it would be done in private, I think Mr. Brennan will waive any claims on that. I think that a cause is, is not necessary in any case, because Mr. Brennan's contract is clear that either party may terminate this agreement for any reason, with or without cause, and that's all that's required. So if we, if we vote with a majority vote, the standard, the standard majority vote with a quorum present, I think that that's effective to terminate Mr. Brennan's contract. I think he would agree with that. Is that right, Mr. Brennan? Mr. Brennan, do you agree with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hang on, no, he doesn't agree.
Oh, yeah, well, in here it says, "Whereas the city council is of the opinion that Mr. Brennan's, uh, that Mr. Brennan's, the nature of Mr. Brennan's conduct," it's a sick in there, 'cause it's, I'm reading it as is, "that Mr. Brennan's, the nature of Mr. Brennan's conduct gives cause for this action."
What is that conduct?
So it's, it's, that's what I wanna know, what conduct, what nature of his, and what conduct gives cause for this action? The only reason it would have. The only reason it would have to go in executive session is if you were a municipal officer. And since you're saying he's not a municipal officer, then we can't take it into executive session. It has to be discussed and open on the dais. So what exactly is his conduct that you drafted, Mr. McCormick, giving cause for this action of his termination?
In discussions with Mr. Brennan on this subject, he waived any presentation of claims of causes of action. And they would be inappropriate in public in any case.
Even though you're asked?
I'm sorry?
Even though you're asked what the conduct is based on the agenda item, do we need to change it?
How is council supposed to vote on something? We don't even know what we're voting on. Conduct, what conduct?
Okay, I'll entertain an amendment to change that to...
Recede. It's five minutes till nine.
I can call a recess. Anytime I want.
Yeah, watch your stuff. Watch your stuff.
My mom told me to watch your stuff and make sure that nobody touches it or looks at it.
That's right. Good for you.
Well, you got two little, you got two little guards up here.
Hey, this is fun, sitting in this mini chair. And being up here during an active meeting. Fedora. Can I wear your fedora?
Hmm, where'd you get that? I don't want any. She's giving you a snack? Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's four minutes after nine. We are on item number three. We are on item number three with thirteen to go. So we are... Douglas, whenever you're ready, thank you. We're deciding, Ms. McLean had asked Mr. McCormick the conduct that we're taking into consideration on the dismissal of Mr. Brennan as the ordinance, as the resolution, excuse me, is written. And I think that's where we were at when we took a break. So with that said, Mr. McCormick?
I have a motion to terminate Mr. Brennan's contract. I think a motion's been made and seconded. I'll call a question.
The question has been called. There are people signed up, so it's overruled.
By calling the question, can we have any further discussion? This is an important thing.
He's gonna, well, I'm overruling it because there's people signed up. You got one, two, three, four, five, six people signed up. And I believe that the will of the people needs to be heard. And with that said, overruled. Okay, with that said, Mr. Bruce Smiley. There will be time for discussion at the end, unless somebody calls a question again.
Bruce Smiley, Caleb, two-four-seven Fox Hall Lane. On the agenda summary, this has been discussed. But I would like to point out, the city attorney represents the body of the city, the citizens. It is not the personal counsel of the city council. Under the background notes indicate that Mr. Brennan is not a municipal officer, which has been hashed out and supposedly solved here. Under the summary, the notes indicate that the nature of Mr. Brennan's conduct gives cause. And as a citizen and a member of the body that he represents and has represented for the last fifteen to twenty years, I would like an explanation from the authors of this item, what that conduct is, to make sure we don't make the same mistake in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Okay, with that said, let's move on to the next person on the agenda, which is Frank Paul.
Frank Paul, one-twelve Shalimar. Of course, I didn't know what Bruce says. The city attorney represents the citizens. Now, you're citizens, yes. But he doesn't represent council as a whole. And that being said, I asked Mr. Brennan the question I'm going to ask you, and he said, "Sure. Mr. Douglas Gregory, please tell me what conduct you're referring to." Sure you can.
Yes, he can.
Go ahead. Tell me what conduct.
Very glad to. And this is where Mr. Howell made an outrageous statement. There are two particular items that I'm bound to wear. I can't say something. And you can laugh, but we discuss it in executive.
That's fine, you've said enough right there.
We discussed it in executive session.
You've said enough right there.
Good and well, I cannot talk about... You asked me a question.
Mr. Brennan already said it was okay.
Hold on, Mr. Paul has the floor.
He asked me a question, I'm answering.
Mr. Brennan said you could, but that's all right.
You weren't recognized, Douglas.
You've already answered.
No.
You weren't recognized, Douglas.
You've already answered. Now, the point is, you're right. The city council can remove our city attorney. That's your right. No question about it. I'm not arguing that. I'm just arguing, your language here stinks. Your language here is absurd. And you should say, because Mr. Brennan said it was okay, but you give me all this hullabaloo. I'll tell you what I think it is. And Bruce probably alluded to it a little bit while ago. The meeting of five-twenty-nine, which I hope everybody looks at, it's nine minutes. That's all it was. And as a result of that, Mr. Brennan, who's our city attorney, representing our city, in his opinion, it was a meeting that was held improper. He's an officer of the court. And being an officer of the court, he has a duty and a responsibility to report anything that is improper to the DA's office. And that's what he did. Now, if that's cause for action, in your mind, God help us with whoever else comes on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. All right, Douglas, did you want to read? Douglas, you're recognized on the floor if you wanted to answer anything that Mr. Paul said.
First of all...
I'm talking to Douglas. He's recognized because he asked to be. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Douglas is recognized on the floor because he asked to be during the exchange between Mr. Paul and Douglas.
First of all, Mr. Howell was incorrect stating, "The reason I did this is because any action that may or may not have occurred by Mr. Brennan on the meeting early may cause this." Totally false. Totally false. In that action, Mr. Brennan accused one council member of whatever his motion was. Just one council, not anybody else. Two, my objections, even though Mr. Brennan said we did not have to enumerate them, my objections come with items that have come up in executive council, executive session, of which I'm bound not to say anything. Now, I can sit here, and I'm violating the executive session, if that's what the mayor wants. I won't do it. My hands are tied. I can't talk about the two items, which have nothing to do with the May meeting. It has nothing to do with me. It has everything to do with the city. Two items I can't talk about. Now, if we wait a half a year, they'll probably both resolve themselves, and then I can. But I can't. I can't. And anybody who suggests anything to the otherwise is knowingly lying and knowingly putting politics ahead of trying to do things in a orderly methodology. I have to find out. So I do have two reasons that I feel... The first ten years that I was on the council with Mr. Brennan were very good years. I got reams of papers from Mr. Brennan highlighting this or that code, of which I should be responsible for and didn't. And I liked that. I relied on Mr. Brennan for his common sense and his showing me ordinances or codes or this, that, and the other that I didn't know about. I'm not a lawyer. But to the answer to the question, Mr. Paul, he can laugh and snicker. But I cannot talk about the two items that caused me to, whether I would vote for or against this item. I can't do it. I am concerned about, because we have Mr. McCormick, who gives a very cogent argument of why this should be done as opposed to that. I'm prepared to vote if it requires a simple majority. And I'm prepared to vote if we have a supermajority. But I'm not sure which is applicable. Now, Mr. Brennan has, I think magnanimously, waived that. That's fine for Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan, of all things he is, he is a man, I believe, of honor. I may disagree with him on a whole bunch of things, but he's a man of honor. Now, his waiver notwithstanding, future councils will get up here, and they'll take whatever we do as precedent. And if precedent says we go to the contract and abide by the contract, that's one thing. If precedent says we go and requires a supermajority, that's another thing. I am, I co-authored this with Mr. McCormick. I stand by the co-authorship. But I want a determination which one is the applicable code. Mr. McCormick says it's one. Mr. Brennan says it's another. Ms. McLean, I know Ms. McLean will always disagree with Mr. McCormick. She disagrees with it. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. Our former mayor is... We've had people who've come up here and have stated things that are the law, which they may or may not be. They're not lawyers either. I want a clarification. Well, it has not been a clarification in my...
In private?
No, it don't.
I just asked. She asked you a question, and I'm not sure whether you agree with her.
I want a clear abject determination which is which, because I think it is the contract we look at determines whether we keep him or not. But Mrs. Scott brings to me a viable question that it's not this council that I'm worried about. It's the...
Yes, taken.
It's future councils.
A point of order has been called by a citizen. Thank you, Mr. ... No, no, hang on. So, all right. Okay, Mr. Dooling, you are next in line.
Going to have to go fast. Brother William Dooling, two-zero-one, Gladiola Lane. This issue, it's clear, what Mr. Gray was just talking about, is not a municipal officer. And I know this, because we had this argument many years ago, which involved Mr. Smiley, Caleb. I was the judge. The mayor wanted to get rid of me in midterm. And I'm a state, at that time, was a state office holder, because a lot of people don't know, municipal court is not a municipal court. It's a state court. And therefore, it's a term of office, two years contiguous to mayor. And you cannot be removed except for cause. And it's a cumbersome process through the Council on Judicial Whatever. I forgot. My problem with this is, it's clear you want to terminate Mr. Brennan, and you will do it. But I think you are so inconsistent in language and textual considerations. It's just embarrassing that educated people could write these things. So I think Ms. McLean was right in wanting to know where this comes from. If you are going to say, in the body, the thing that we don't have, the nitty-gritty of the wheresses and fourses and so on, if you're going to put ugly stuff in there that's cause matter, then you need to say up here, in this little squib that goes out to everybody, that you wish that the contract will not be renewed for cause. Then you can put your causes, and they can be oblique or obtuse or whatever you want, but at least you've got some cause there. But if you wish to terminate Mr. Brennan for no cause, that's what this indicates here. Until then, I find out what you're reading about nasty this, that, and the other thing. So it's inconsistent internally. I think you ought to be gentlemen and gentlewomen about it and simply terminate Mr. Brennan for no cause. You don't need to get into all that stuff. If you want to get into it, well, I think, Douglas, you can say, "Lost confidence in legal opinions." That doesn't let any cat out of the bag. Didn't return phone calls. I mean, you can come up with things that are, you can say them in a nice way rather than nasty. And you don't have to divulge secrets. You can, and I agree with you. You can't divulge that. But you don't have to say that. You can just say, "I've lost confidence in abilities or analysis or work ethic or whatever." But honestly, we... But honestly, we keep doing, you keep doing this over and over again of unnecessarily shooting yourselves in the foot when you don't even have to do it because you want to make a point and you know you can win. And that really leaves a bad taste in most of the citizens. Let the man go for no cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Two-eight, Chattington Court. I'm John Squire. Just have to echo, Brother Dooling obviously brought some great points up in regards to cause and no cause. And I think he's right. You all have shot yourself in the foot over and over again. So I just got to echo exactly what he's saying. I'm sorry, I'm kind of a broken record in that regard. But I do need to point out that you talk about a majority and minority of council in regards to Mr. Brennan. What about a majority and minority of the citizens? Have you taken the time to even consider the citizens and what he's trying to, what Mr. Brennan is trying to do to protect the citizens? Because again, you all know, he works for us. He doesn't work for y'all. And I think you need to strongly look at that or take that into consideration if you're going to terminate him. At least, at least pull the citizens or do something in that regard to see if you think the citizens believe that Mr. Brennan is not doing the job that he was hired for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Pam, Pam, you okay? Thank you. All right, we've passed that up. So where we're at is... Did you get your answer on...
You hit six, that's four.
Two of them decided they didn't want to talk. Thank you.
No, Mr. Mayor, I still have no idea what conduct we're talking about, and the resolution before us talks about conduct, even though I agree with the citizens that it's inappropriate to...
So do we, Mr. Brennan, because of the item on the agenda and the way it was posted, do we need to table this and come back? Leslie, I have the floor, please. Do we have to table this and come back based on the way it was worded? I mean, should it now be, you're going to be fired for lack of confidence by certain council members?
Well, that's not been suggested, so...
I'm suggesting it.
Yeah, but you can't make motions.
Oh, that's right. I don't have any power. I forgot.
So anyway, the, is there a motion already made?
There's a motion and a second on the table.
Okay, then that's, it stands the way it sits.
Without an answer of your conduct for being fired.
Yeah, well, it says I'm being fired for the nature of my conduct, whatever that was,
I make a motion to amend to delete the second whereas under the resolution, which is a part talking about cause and so forth, and I think we can proceed with that deletion.
Is that a motion, sir?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor to the amendment?
I think we have discussion first, don't we?
Discussion is fine. Yes, sir, go ahead.
The discussion that Mr. Gregory raised a moment ago as to which of these statutes is applicable, 22.077 would be applicable if we had not elected to exercise the city manager form of government. Having done that, paragraph 25.051 applies. Mr. Brennan is not a municipal officer. He does not contend that he is a municipal officer. In addition, he has waived the application of state law under the terms of the contract, so that all that's required is a majority vote, in my understanding, and Mr. Brennan did not say, did not take a position adverse to my interpretation of the law. He just said he didn't know what the law was. Is that not right, Mr. Brennan?
That's right. I find it hard to believe that 25051 means that there's only one officer in the city after you have the city manager form of government. But I can't say one way or another. I mean, you studied it and researched it, and I don't know whether that's correct or incorrect. I'd have to have more time to look at that.
That's where I'm at. As far as that, I think I've answered the question, so I'll call for the vote.
Ms. Scott, you can't call for the vote. There's a discussion open on the table. Overruled. Ms. Scott?
I've already said everything I have to say. I'm not sure where it falls one way or the other. So I'm still left...
Ms. McLean?
I don't know that I have anything else to say on this issue, except I still have concern over what the vote would need to be to... I don't like the resolution. Just deleting that one section is not sufficient. I think that these resolutions are, just the language is tragic. So I have a lot of problems with resolution, other, I mean, besides deleting the paragraph on conduct. This is...
What are they?
I don't know what to say.
What are the problems? I want to hear.
Okay. Problems with it. City attorney serves at the pleasure of council as an independent contractor providing legal advice and services to the city...
I'm sorry, Ms. McLean, I can't understand you. You're speaking too fast.
I apologize.
You could speak a little closer to the microphone. That would be a help.
The city attorney serves at the pleasure of the city council as an independent contractor providing legal advice and services to the city under the terms of a written contract. As a contract provide of legal services on a part-time basis, Mr. Brennan is not a municipal officer. And whereas, the city council is of the opinion that Mr. Brennan, in this paragraph, Mr. McCormick has suggested an amendment to delete. The next whereas, the city council desires to give notice of council's decision not to renew his part-time contract after August 31, 2018. And whereas, it is necessary to begin procedures to hire replacements for city attorney. Now therefore be it ordained, the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, that section one. The city council hereby gives Mr. Michael Brennan notice of intent not to renew the contract for part-time legal services with Mr. Michael Brennan as city attorney after August 31, 2018, in accordance with the terms of his contract with the city. And whereas, section two, or section two, city manager shall immediately give written notice to Michael Brennan regarding the city, regarding the council's decision not to renew his contract after August 31, 2018. And section three, the city manager shall immediately issue and publish an open, anyone may apply request for qualifications to identify persons to be interviewed for the positions of permanent city attorney and alternate duly ordained. Sentences aren't complete. I mean, there are so many grammatical problems with it that I don't even want something like this on the books as a resolution for the city.
Okay. Ms. Winger?
I would like to add another amendment to remove alternate.
I'll second that amendment.
I want to hear what that means.
Well, the last section three, the last two words in section three are "and alternate." Those two words should be deleted to make the context more clear and the communication more accurate. Mr. Mayor, since you're the arbiter of all rulings, is the amendment to the amendment in discussion being brought up at the right time?
Yes. You have to vote on it now.
I don't understand the question.
Can the amendment be brought up in the middle of the amendment that we're talking about that hadn't passed yet?
Sure. You can stack amendments all night long on top of this thing.
Okay, all right. Well, let's stack that one. Minnie, are you with us there? Okay, thanks. Okay, so let's vote on Ms. Winger's change of... Minnie, what time did you leave Friday? It's only because I'm just wondering about people changing things up to the last minute. Never mind, it's not important.
Because we don't have to talk until we get it.
Okay, you're right. You're right, since you spent all day with her. So with that said, is there a vote for that amendment which took out...
Alternate.
Alternate.
Alternate. All in favor? All opposed? All that abstain? Okay. Minnie, where are we at, please?
Now we're on the original amendment.
Minnie, where are we at, please? I'd like to hear so the public can hear. Ms. Winger isn't the scribe of this council?
Yes, Mayor, we're on the second amendment to delete the second whereas as motion by Councilmember McCormick and second by Councilmember Winger.
Okay. All right, does everybody understand where we're at? So we're voting on this first amendment. All in favor? All opposed? All abstain? Thank you. So let's go back to the original. Mr. Brennan, I'm going to ask that you speak. Did you want to speak on this at all?
I'd rather speak when it's over.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Okay. So let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor?
On what?
On the proposed amendments, the proposed item with amendments attached. I have a discussion on this.
Fair enough. Go ahead.
Want me to start?
Sure.
I've known Mr. Brennan for 60 years, longer than anybody in this office, anybody on this council, and only Tim comes close to rivaling how long we've had, we've served with Mr. Brennan. I know him very well. He was my next-door neighbor. He is a good friend of mine. He is my lawyer. And that's why this makes it very difficult. And Mr. Smiley and Mr. Paul are grinning back there, and I think this is very interesting because this is an important thing. It may be, you know, we've had an instance in the past where we'd had former mayors just simply, "You're gone. You're gone to city manage. You're just gone." Well, this is important. This is very important. I'm very much torn. There were two things, and as I say, I can't discuss, but I've had a long discussion with Mr. Brennan off and on with regard to things that have concerned me a great deal. They still concern me. I'm not hamlet, because I will have to make a decision on this one way or another. But to me, I thought, as I said, the first 10 years that Mr. Brennan was doing, I think he was on the top of his game. Absolute top of his game. There was, the city attorney should be here to help the city council members. Some of us learn the hard way that we don't know everything. That's me. And the way you learn you don't know everything is because the city attorney or the city manager will tell you, "Have you thought about so-and-so? Here's the code that reflects it." Rethink. And he doesn't say, "Don't, you're wrong," but he says, "Rethink it." Mr. Brennan, many times, we went to gyms and we discussed things over what he did, what he thought I was doing. And we haven't done that the last four years that I've been here. I don't know why it stopped. It certainly would have helped me, but it stopped. Perhaps that's my fault, perhaps it's Mr. Brennan's fault, but it stopped. Now, Mr. Brennan has assured me that that would start again, but of course, he would. But the quality of Mr. Brennan's work, I think, in the overall picture, has been quite good. In the last few years, I think it has not. But there is a question in my mind, is do we stick with the devil you know and hope you have a chance of change? Or do you go out for change and hopefully you get whatever you get? That's what we're talking about right now. Keep the devil you know and hope that he improves, or change and get a devil you don't know. That's my dilemma. Fortunately, four people on this council are absolutely certain that he's either angel or devil. It's a political question for them. Don't think it's not. It's a pure, raw political question. For me, it's not. If it was a political question, it would make the vote very easy. This is a personal question, but it also involves what's, I believe, retaining Mr. Brennan. Would that be the best for Castle Hills going forward? Mr. Brennan told me a few years ago that he was nearing retirement. Of course, I told him about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, that I wasn't going to run again. But circumstances forced me to run again, because I wanted the people to determine whether they wanted me or not. I just wanted to make it clear on the record, it has nothing to do with any May meeting or anything that came out from any May meeting. Wanted to make that abundantly clear. So no matter how I vote, I'm voting how I see, what I believe is the best interest of the city of Castle Hills. It's not a political vote on my part. It is not even close to it. It's a personal vote for the citizens of the city and Mr. Brennan. So those of you who want to hang me, half are going to want to hang me for voting yes or no, and the other half are going to hang me for voting... Just get used to it, because half of you aren't going to like me. But that's tough luck. I'm through.
Ms. Winger, do you have anything else to say?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, do you have anything else to say during this time?
Yes, I do. There's a right way to treat people and there's a wrong way to treat people. And what I've seen in the last couple of meetings is that there's a lot of treating people the wrong way. And it discourages me and makes me angry that we're not respectful and courteous to people.
Out of order.
She's in the middle of a statement, but go ahead.
This has everything to do with an agreement...
Point of order is that the discussion has nothing to do with the matter before the council, and it's not appropriate at this time.
I think you're wrong, Mr. Brennan. He called for discussion on the item before we're going through the second time. Is Mr. McCormick correct on that?
It's up to you, Mayor, to make a ruling.
Overruled.
Appeal it to the vote.
There was discussion in the resolution originally about conduct.
Overruled.
I appeal that to a vote.
Overruled.
You can't overrule that. You got to hold a vote on it.
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. She's in the middle of discussion. Mr. Brennan?
I call an appeal to the vote.
I believe this is just the wrong way to treat a person. Everything about what has been done to the city attorney, the city employees...
Would you all like to take a break, Leslie?
No.
Yeah, I think we will.
I'm going to call four, five, and six, Mr. Mayor.
I'll ask you right when we finish this. All right, everybody, we're about one minute out. If we can find our seats, please. Of course.
I think they're voting for you to make your decision. I think you have to do that considering the benefit of the city.
Okay. I surely hope that what was discussed between the three had nothing to do what was on here because it wasn't noticed in a public meeting and heard by everyone, but I will go with better thoughts, maybe, of course, that wasn't spoke about.
Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you exactly what was talked about. I asked their theory of government. I said, "Do you believe that you're supposed, as voting in, you're reflecting the votes of the people who voted for you, or did they vote for you to make your own decision?" That's what I asked.
Thank you. Now that we got that cleared, let's move on. Okay, where we're at, Minnie, go ahead.
We're pending the vote, the initial, on the original vote, sir, on the original one. We already voted on the two amendments.
Motion which states, "Consider and act upon a resolution R-180710A that legal service contracted by Michael S. Brennan shall be, shall not be renewed after August 31, 2018, and shall terminate on the date. Direct the city manager to immediately issue and publish an open, anyone may apply, request for qualifications to identify persons on the interviewed for the positions of permanent city attorney with amendments applied." All in favor?
Were we still in a discussion, sir, I'm sorry?
I don't think so.
Yes, we were in the middle of discussion, I was in the middle of speaking.
Okay, are you finished?
I suppose at this point I am.
I thought I already asked you.
No, sir, not yet.
Well, go ahead.
Thank you. I found one word in this agenda that is a little concerning to me, it was... My apologies, I oozed it back, scooched it back during recess. In this last, Section Three, on the resolution, the city manager shall immediately issue and publish an open, anyone may apply, request for qualifications to identify persons to be interviewed for the position of permanent city attorney. My question is, permanent as in forever permanent city attorney? Since Mr. Brennan has been quoted several times in here as being a part-time city attorney, I just would like some clarification from Mr. McCormick and Mr. Gregory what they meant by permanent city attorney under Section Three.
To that extent, Mr. Brennan has been a permanent city attorney, although he's been part-time under contract. Whoever we engage to replace him will also be a permanent city attorney, most likely under contract, and most likely part-time, because I don't think we can afford to hire a full-time lawyer, and I'm not sure we need one. It's clear, Mr. Brennan is already representing three other cities aside from ours, and so, any attorney that we engage can probably also be representing several other cities and would likely not be full-time here, but would be permanent for all practical considerations. He's a permanent, part-time, contracted employee, or contract provider of legal services.
But, how are you a permanent employee if you're renewing contracts? If you're continually relying on renewing contracts, that's not permanent employment, that's a term employment.
Okay, you want to delete the term, you want to delete the word permanent? I'm fine with that.
Why not? We've adjusted it about five times.
I move to amend again to delete the word permanent from Section Three of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Call a question.
Question's been called. Douglas, you didn't want to say anything?
No.
Okay, good, all in favor?
All in favor.
All opposed? All abstain? Okay?
That was my only question, thank you, sir.
I think it's time to call a question on the whole, on the whole resolution at this point, Mr. Mayor.
The whole resolution, yes, sir.
Call her roll vote, please.
A roll call vote has been requested. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
I vote aye to pass the resolution.
Ms. Scott?
I abstain.
Miss?
Abstain.
Ms. Winger?
Aye.
Douglas?
In fact, there are three extensions. I'm not gonna abstain, but I'm just curious why we're abstaining on this.
Because they don't think it's, they don't think it's a legal action. Or, they think it's a legal action, but the wording and everything of the agenda, from what I've heard so far, they said it's, it's not appropriate. So, it's legal, as per Mr. Brennan and Mr. McCormick said. But, you know, if it looks like a skunk, it smells like a skunk, it's probably a skunk. But, go ahead.
Well, I'm quite surprised that everybody isn't gonna do one thing or another. Very surprised. If it ends up two votes in favor, does it fail?
Mr. Brennan? Because we have two extensions.
I guess the question he's asking is if there are three extensions and two in favor, what's the outcome of the vote? I guess it passes. I mean, you know, you've got a quorum here, and a majority of the quorum that votes counts, so I guess it passes.
So, if the vote is two to one, does it pass?
Yes, sir.
My vote is no.
Passes two to one. Author of the bill, interesting.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a short statement regarding my engagement as the Castle Hill City Attorney for the past fifteen years. I wish to thank God the Father Almighty for that engagement. I want to thank the fifteen city councils for whom I have worked for that engagement, and the honorable citizens of this city for whom I have served as city attorney. My goal has been to require the city to faithfully and diligently honor and adhere to the law while seeking compassion and fairness for the citizens. I believe the government during my tenure has been clean and law-abiding, which the citizens can be proud, and I wish the best to all of you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. During the break, Mr. McCormick asked to pull item number four, five, and six.
And I affirm that request, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number seven. Consider by minute order to direct the city manager to get an updated estimate from the city attorney on the cost analysis to reconstruct Banyon Street from Carrollwood to Tamworth in concrete or asphalt, and with special emphasis on drainage concerns. Mr. Gregory?
This is a very simple thing, it doesn't require a great deal of explanation, but in the street and drainage committee, there was an estimation given what it would cost to fix Banyon. I'm simply, this simply goes back to direct the city manager to get an update on those costs because I expect to bring this as an item to be voted on to fix Banyon in the very near future, but I want to know the updated price of the cost. This affects some seventy-five to eighty homes, and I just need an updated estimate.
Thank you, Douglas. All right, this seems like a pretty simple one. Do we have a motion on the table for it? Do I have a second for this item, please? Thank you, Mr. McCormick. We have a motion and a second on the table, discussion. Douglas, go ahead, you already did, did you want to say some more, please?
I don't expect this to cost the city anything inasmuch as the people who made the approximation a year or two ago, who would be the same people, and they have come back to as many times before with an updated explanation of what things may have increased or decreased in cost. So, this should cost the city zero.
Thank you. Ms. McLenn, did you have any comments regarding... Excuse me, Ms. Winger, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Winger, my apologies. Ms. McLenn, did you have anything to say on this?
I do have a few things. The agenda communication I have on this has no issues, no pros, no cons, no attachments, no fiscal impact, except it says pending estimate. We have a professional city manager, it's already on his list to hire one of our engineering firms to do a capital improvement plan that would include stuff as drainage. And in my opinion, as a member of council, the continued consideration of spot drainage and street issues is not going to be an effective way to handle these. I mean, this is already something that was on Mr. Rapley's list of things to look at as part of a capital improvement plan, and so, I don't, there's nothing here for me to even make a decision on.
Thanks, Ms. McLenn, Ms. Scott?
I wish there was documentation with this. Mr. Gregory said that this is something that's already been looked at, that it's been done before, where's the paperwork, where's the documentation for that? The only thing in my packet, so you can see, is one page with a picture on it of the streets that they want to get a quote-unquote "cost analysis" on, which I believe is a business term, it's not exactly an engineering design term, per se. And that there's no pros, cons, attachments, it's pending an estimate. It states that we will get this estimate from the quote "city engineer," which engineer is that? We have four from the city, so I'm not sure which, we don't have an actual city engineer, we have four engineering firms that we can use. And it says, "A cost analysis to reconstruct Banyon from Carrollwood to Tamworth in concrete or asphalt with special emphasis on drainage concerns." Well, my concern, since I don't have any documentation at all on this whatsoever, is, I know Mr. Gregory has said this isn't gonna cost any money, but I don't know any engineering firms that work for free. Do you want a program where, like, they decide what they're going to do? Do you want them to put together a design that includes the drainage and everything that's gonna take to fix that area? Do you want all the way from programming to designing to the whole process through the end costs? What exactly are you asking the city manager? That's where I'm concerned and very confused as to what you're directing the city manager to do, and are you approving funds for him to do this?
Leslie, would you like to meet with Douglas in private? Thank you. Go ahead.
So, just coming at this from, from a design point of view, is that, yes, it has identified the three blocks of Banyon that, that a cost analysis, that they want Mr. Rapley to look into a cost analysis for, but I'm not exactly sure if that's just the cost analysis of the cost of the concrete or asphalt to go dump on the existing road. There is no documentation, so that's my concern. Where's, what exactly are you asking Mr. Rapley to do?
Mr. McCormick?
I happen to live on Carrollwood, and Banyon is the street that carries all the water away that comes to us from San Antonio. So, I understand the reasoning behind Mr. Gregory's request for a cost estimate to reconstruct it. Reconstructing essentially means you tear out what's there and you put in concrete. The reason he wants to do that is because, as I understand it, concrete has much better durability under constant water assault than does asphalt. And so, that's worthwhile on its own. I'm not sure that a great deal of, a collection of paperwork is gonna help with the understanding of that. I think that the request for a cost estimate is reasonable. I don't, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, but I wouldn't think it would be a great deal. I think it's worth doing because that's one, one of the things that we could do that would partially resolve one of our major drainage problems. Wouldn't solve it altogether, but it would be a partial resolution because it would fix that street, we wouldn't have to go back and do it every few years because the asphalt's washed away or frozen out because of water damage. So, I think it's, it's a worthwhile effort.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Winger asked to speak.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment and delete for a cost analysis so that it simply reads "An updated estimate from the city engineer to reconstruct Banyon." The reason I'm doing that is because we already have an estimate in the drainage plan, and so, we just need to know, it's about three years old, we just need to know the update, not, it's not a cost analysis, it's simply an update of the estimate.
So, there's an amendment?
An estimate that already exists, that they've already done the study on.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, there's an amendment on the table in order to get with the city manager and look over the estimate. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? All abstain? Okay. Three, one opposed, one abstain. Okay, so, thank you. The only, the only question I had, so, I mean, have we, have we solved the problem of the engineer who's, we've already had one picked out, and there is an estimate on the table somewhere that we don't know about?
Yes, the street committee.
It's the street committee, okay, okay.
And we used...
When you say the engineer, I just want to know, has he found somebody to work for free?
The engineer, the street committee used for, the master plan was, I can't remember the name right now.
Okay.
Anyway, they're the obvious, they're the only ones that we've...
Point of order, do we have to vote on the main motion?
Sure, but we're still in a kind of discussion mode, yeah, no doubt. Okay. Okay, I just, I was just curious. Okay, so, with that said, let's go ahead and move forward with a vote for the item number seven, which is, yes? You raising a point of order, sir? Citizen comment? Now, I'm getting tired. Thank you, thank you, John. Brother Dooling didn't sign up on this one. John Squier? No, you weren't signed up on this one. Attaboy, stay with it, man.
Thank you, Mayor. John Squier, 2-8, Chattington Court. A couple of things that, that I just want to go ahead and bring up is fixing Banyon is not gonna solve our drainage problem. All Banyon is, is a conduit for, for an influx of water coming in from the city of San Antonio. Still gonna flood, just like it does unless you do a multimillion-dollar project to, to resolve that, that issue over there and try to get that water underground. But, just repaving or resurfacing that street, if that's what, if that's what I'm understanding, is definitely not gonna solve that problem. So, I just want to make sure y'all understand that. Second of all, I think you should clearly give the city manager some funds to go ahead and get a real engineering estimate or revise the engineering estimate, if that's really what you want. Because to get a ROM, it costs. Because to get a ROM, it costs. And if you're not going to pay for it, you're going to get, you're going to get junk. And, and so you get what you pay for in this, in this world. And so if you really want to know what's going on, you're going to, it's going to cost the city a little bit to find out, okay? Engineering companies just can't afford to do work for free. They're not in business to do work for free. I guess in also regards to this, you know, Banyon really has held up admirably well for what it's had to do. It's worked great as a street. Unfortunately, it's been ignored for decades, okay? Yes, it's paved, but that pavement has held up very, very well. We just ignored it for so many years. And I really think the bigger picture is the maintenance, the street maintenance, and I think y'all need to look at getting back to getting that street maintenance program going again. Since I stepped off of council, I've not really heard of any major street maintenance. I'm not talking about street rebuilding, I'm talking street maintenance projects to at least protect the other streets that are, that are failed, that are, you know, getting older in the city. Whatever, slurry seals, whatever needs to be done. We need to be looking at repairing these streets and maintaining these streets versus, versus spot, looking at one street in this, in this city to redo it. I just, I just don't like making repairs a political issue. It needs to be based on information and facts and keep it out from being so politicized. If you're going to look at Banyon, you should look at it in segments, one between Carrollwood and Glen Tower, and then also I'd look at it between Glen Tower and Tamworth. Just to, just to, just if I'm going to, if I'm going to look at that street, I'll look at it in two different sections because they both handle two different amounts of water and they both suffer differently because of that, with Banyon obviously dumping into the culvert.
John, thirty seconds.
Okay, all right. No, all in my, all in my spiel here, but, but just be wise with our money and, and let's look at the city as a, as a whole and instead of just focusing on one single street in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Ms. Ferris?
Passed.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. We were consider and ask, cost analysis, construction of Banyon, Carrollwood, Tamworth, the concrete. I just want to say a couple of things. We've talked about this over the years, Douglas, you and I have, back when you and, well, when John was chairman and then you and John were chairman and over the years and, man, what a great idea. So with that said, I'd like to, we have a motion, we have a second on the table, let's entertain a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Three to two, many? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a procedural question.
Sure.
How do we keep track of minute orders?
How do we keep track of minute orders?
Well, this is a minute order, this isn't a resolution or an ordinance. How do we keep track of those?
Similar to a resolution.
I guess it's a question for the city secretary. How do we keep, do we have a minute order book where you keep track of where these come in?
On the minute orders, I do a council communication sheet and then a follow-up on the minute orders.
Well, I just mean for our records, like to go back in the office and, and look up. If I were going to come in, like a resolution or ordinance, I know I can look in a book, where can I look for minute orders?
It would be in the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, let's go to your old business, which is item number eight, consider and act upon resolution number R-180710D to accept passport business plan to meet first of two required presentations per ordinance number 2018-0612F. Mr. Rapley, you've been very quiet this evening and now is your time.
Thank you, Mayor. As we were requested as staff to put together a business plan, actually it's sort of a team effort between myself and, and Ms. Davis and Ms. Fegan and Ms. McLean as far as putting this report together, but we wanted to put it in and provide it in a summary that helps us, it gets the facts out that we're establishing a passport facility and, again, what is projected for potential revenue, what the intended purpose is and how we might go about advertising that we do have a passport facility here at the city of Castle Hills.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to move this item forward, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Douglas. All right, let's go into a brief discussion, hopefully. Douglas, go ahead.
The one, I like, I like how this is prepared. The only thing I have a question of, and I can see right now, I'm still waiting through it. Startup acquisition summary, the startup cost for the passport acceptance office are a hundred, fifteen hundred dollars. I was under the understanding, and please, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that that door was put in, in assumption that the passport office would be using that door during the day or whenever it was opened. Is that correct or am I wrong?
Would you restate that?
That door over there, which was put in over the last year, was put in there in anticipation of the passport office?
Absolutely not.
That was not...
That was paid for by court funds, which Johnny oversaw and we're in the middle of a project right now, which is stalemated at the moment on whether or not we're going to protect the citizens and also the dais from any gunfire that might happen in here.
I see. Thank you. The second thing is, the person who's manning this is somebody we already have right now, we've already picked them out, and I assume that she will be doing this not on an overtime basis. If it is on an overtime basis, these estimates are low. Are, are these going to be done on, her payment, be done on an overtime basis or will be done on the time that she is generating right now?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
If you'll read down the profit-loss, there is some discussion in here that because we're using current employees, that we anticipate that we would use some comp time or overtime and that that would absolutely need to be figured into the expenses for this. And so there is specific discussion in several places in the business plan that, that acknowledges that there could potentially be overtime or comp time that needs to be taken into consideration.
Where is that found? Ms. McLean?
I believe the first part is under management, under, let's see. Hang on, let me find. Okay, on page five at the bottom, financial management. It will be important to keep track of the expenses associated with the ongoing operation of the passport acceptance facility in order to prepare a break-even analysis for a few months of operation. To do this, we will need to keep track of the total number of passports accepted, passport photos taken, ongoing supply costs, i.e. ink, paper, postage, and employee overtime or comp time incurred as a result of their assistance with the additional duties of acting as a passport acceptance agent. That's the first place. There's more discussion, I believe, in the appendix, under the break-even analysis is the second place that it's mentioned.
Well, I have a little problem here. Once again, we haven't a clue what all these comp times and this and the other might have to generate. There hasn't been even an estimate, what it would, would be generating. That's why, one of the reasons you have a business plan is to have a reasonable estimate. And when you, the, the heart of this program is, well, how much are we paying these four people or the following employees who may be involved in, how much are we paying them over and above what they're being paid now? That's not here. We're told, sort of like, to be determined in the future. If it turns out to be something like thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars because of comp time or overtime, I'd like to know it. Even if it's just a rough guesstimate, I'd like to at least have a rough estimate. But there's no estimate here.
I thought we went over this when we went through this, on the salaried person that we were going to put in charge of this.
I, I know in the previous council, I asked about this with my colleague who was then sitting here next to me, and he said, "Well, we don't know what it's going to cost, we'll just have to play with it."
If I may. The hours of operation are scheduled for Mondays and Wednesdays and Friday, Mondays and Wednesdays from eight-thirty a.m. to one-thirty p.m., which is squarely within our normal business hours. I wouldn't anticipate there would be any overtime or comp time associated with that. The ladies would step away from their current duties and take care of someone who needed their passport processed. On Fridays, the hours are from twelve p.m. to five p.m. and I imagine that we, the city manager or the person managing the hours for the passport office could adjust arrival or departure schedules for that day to adjust for it. The only day where we would potentially have extra would be on Saturday from eight-thirty a.m. to one-thirty p.m., which is a four-hour period, and that's by appointment only. And so unless we had appointments, we wouldn't really know. It would be a maximum four hours on that day.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Ms. Winger, go ahead.
I actually have run a couple of businesses and this is not a business plan. There is no cost at all here. We don't know what this is going to cost. You could not go to a bank and get anything, any money for this type of plan. You could not go to a small business administration and get a loan. There is nothing here. And Tim, you've run businesses, so you know that. First of all, secondly, when we were told about this initially, and I wasn't on council, but I was in the audience, the reason that we were going to be able to compete with all of the post offices, which already have this service and are part of the federal government, is that this was going to be done nights and weekends, and now we're told, no. The post office is also open Saturday morning, so we're not doing anything that the post office isn't currently doing, and I don't see how in the world we're going to attract people. I wouldn't come here if I had a choice of going to the post office.
May I?
So it just doesn't make any sense. This is not a business plan. Maybe there's something that somebody can put together, but this isn't it.
Okay. Ms. McLean?
There, the U.S. Post Office does not accept passports on Saturdays. They only accept during weekdays and it's not even this long of a time period. So Saturday hours are something that would be absolutely unique to us.
Well, no, it's not. I've talked to the post officers that do it on Saturday.
Okay. Ms. Scott? Thank you, ladies.
Back originally when this first came up, I did do research, considering I have a family of four, two underage children who I would have to take with me and my husband to the post office. I did call all the post office to try and book an appointment and the first appointment I could get was so many months out for four people at one time to go in at a specific time. It was just astronomical. I mean, we couldn't have planned a Christmas vacation, we couldn't have planned anything, and this was back in budget season, July or August. So that's why by appointment only on Saturday would be a huge draw, particularly at the beginning when we're trying to get going, is if it takes several months to get a family in. I think those appointments would book up pretty quickly. As far as a business plan goes, what it is or isn't, I can't say because I've never written a business plan, but I thought Ms. McLean did an excellent job covering the topics that you asked of her.
Mr. McCormick?
I agree that, that the convenience is worthwhile, but the issue here is the business plan. And I'm afraid I do have some questions about the business plan. I understand from, from the way that the question's been answered, Ms. McLean, you wrote the business plan, is that right?
Yes, I did the majority of it. Mrs. Fagans had, Mrs. Fagans had put together some information and then I took that and flushed it out and added discussions of marketing ideas and went back and consulted with Ms. Davis about some other issues, facts that I needed.
That's fine. First of all, the marketing plan doesn't really have any marketing action described. It says we're going to do a, a marketing plan, just says it's not going to be very expensive, but it doesn't elaborate on the plan that I originally heard from you, Ms. McLean, to use the LED sign at the, at the corner of the church lot and facing the highway. And I can see how that might be useful. It would take some, some planning to know how much free time we have and how much we could use, and that's not included in the plan. The other items that are not included is, was there an application fee or not?
There is no application fee.
No application fee? But we did take some time to fill out the form, right? And who did that? Did you do that as well?
No, that was done, it was started with Mr. Vandwally and I believe it was completed in January after Janet became the interim.
Okay, but we, somebody, somebody spent hours to do that and we don't know how much time that took or whose hours they were or how much it was worth to the city to put that time in. We're currently, I understand, doing some training and we have no, no estimate of the hours lost or the dollars lost to the training expense of preparing for this operation. In corporation expenses, I see there were none, and I understand that, that we already have a corporation, but the fact is that a corporation has some legal protection that puts it outside the city and it would be of some value to, to consider whether or not to do that.
Mr. McCormick, you cannot be a private entity and do this for the federal government. You have to be a municipality or a, a branch of the federal government. You cannot be a private corporation and offer these services.
Okay, I just wonder, is it possible for a, for a, limited liability corporation to be owned by the city and still qualify?
No, we have, no.
You don't know?
Oh, she said no.
Is that correct, Mr. Burnet?
I'm sorry, I can't hear whoever's speaking. Who was that? Was that you, Ms. Fagans?
There was quite a bit of the packet that comes from, excuse me, there's a packet from the, the State Department, explains what type of entity you have to be and how you have to be a municipality and how many hours you would have to do this. And you, it's not a private business.
Pretty clear that you can't be...
It's very clear.
Can't be a corporation aside from...
Not what this, this one is.
Okay, that's good. Then there's some, some wage expenses. We have some training time that has been expended. We don't know how much time that is or how much more we're going to expend and what the hours that we're putting into that are worth. I see that there is no insurance that's, that's contemplated for this operation and that would be a cost. It happens that this, this looks to me like a proprietary enterprise on the part of the city. It's not going to qualify for sovereign immunity and because we have a great deal in, in the passport information of people, of private information that needs to be kept in a secure way, we've made no plan for that security or for the insurance that we might need if there were a loss of that private information. The pre-operating advertising is only two hundred dollars and we don't have any idea what that is or how it's to be used or where, where that advertising would be expended. That's just a few of the items. There's, there's little or no analysis in the, in the break-even analysis at the back and we don't know anything about the startup cost either. And that, in my opinion, is a severe deficit in any kind of a business plan because we really are not, we really have no information on which to make a decision. So I guess I'd have to move that we send this back for, for reconsideration by, by the committee that put it together to see if we can full, fill out, flesh out some of the information that we really need to know about how this is going to go.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. I, I appreciate you saying that because, you know, there, I know that, I own four businesses and I know that it's very important to have a plan and especially if you're going to make money at it. And you, you need to tighten up as much as you can and I appreciate the fact that you'd resend it back, whether, rather than just kill the idea because we've, the idea of this process took six months, I believe, didn't it, to, to give our application? And I don't know, I respect the fact that Ms. Winger knows that you can go to the post office. I had to have mine in two days and it cost me a thousand bucks, but I got a passport in two days. So the question I have, Amy, is are we going to allow... a passport in two days. So, uh, the question I have, Amy, is are we going to allow for, uh, special needs situation, or is this just gonna roll like a regular business?
This, the US Department of State sets forth all the rules, requirements. They give you the operating procedures. They help you set up how the, the information is kept private. They help you set up the processes. That is all driven by the, the Department of State. Um, you have to be a city, and this is a, this is something they only sanction for a municipality or like a post office, that sort of thing. So I, I disagree with Mr. McCormick that we wouldn't have the sovereign immunity. Our general insurance, whatever we have as a city would, that would cover people that are coming to the city anyway, would cover someone coming to the passport office. Um, and certainly, I suppose, at some point, if it became substantially successful, you could factor in a percentage of whatever insurance premiums we pay to it.
Hang on before we get into the bushes. All I wanna know is, uh, on Mr. McCormick's comments of, of a sound business plan, could we come up with one of those and, uh, bring it back as far as what our estimates are based on, um, uh, uh, time and, uh, what it would cost and how we could move it forward? Don't get me wrong, I'm for it a hundred percent. I know. I think it can make a lot of money, but I also, from a business aspect, would like to see, uh, I would hope that we would, we would look at it in a, as a business and not, you know, more of a, of a city function.
I imagine between everybody in the office, they could come up with those numbers. I mean, they know how much time they've spent on training. They know how much time we've worked on the business plan, on the application process. Those are all, all things that I think they have an idea of how much time has been spent.
Do you think we should do, could do that in a short period of time?
I don't know. I don't know what their schedules are like. I try to let them get their work done.
All right. Yeah.
We've got about a month till the next council meeting. I think that's when it would come up in any case. Uh, and if they already know most of those numbers, putting dollar figures to them shouldn't be too hard. We just need to have a better grip on where we're going with this and what it's gonna cost. I know Ms. McLennan probably doesn't remember, but I supported this at the outset, even though I initially objected to it. Before it was voted on, I got up and said, "Let's go ahead and do it and see if it works." I'd like to see it work. I don't have any, any great animus against a passport office, and I'm in favor of the city making some money, but I think we have to have a real good business plan to make it float.
Would council entertain tableing this till the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we have to vote on that?
Ms. McLennan, you brought this forward, I believe. Would you?
Mayor, don't we have to vote on that?
Yeah, we do. As a matter of fact, we do.
Um, I move that we table it till the next council meeting. Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Um...
Pull this item.
Okay. Ms. McLennan has asked, Ms. Winger, sorry it's late. Ms. Winger has asked to pull this item, so granted. Let's go to the next item, which is Consider an Act Upon Ordinance Number 2018-0612C. Sure. Okay, okay, yeah. We're, we're gonna do a five-minute recess, just for a second.
I guess I lost this there, Mayor.
Uh, yes, sir. Number nine.
What's happening to Mar...
Uh, not sure. But, uh, anyway.
Want to take a recess?
That's what we did, five minutes. I'm sorry. We're taking a five-minute recess in order to, uh, accommodate a council member, and then we'll be back at it at, uh, ten twenty-five. Please, don't be late.
Want some nuts? Or a piece of cheese?
I'll take the cheese.
Okay.
No, I can't eat. I'm having a physical.
Oh, you can't even eat nuts? Oh, really? Oh, you, oh, 'cause you, you're having a cholesterol test? Oh, the only thing you have is a passport. Oh. Uh-huh, but I don't do it. No point in it.
You pay for it.
Right. I don't care. I get what I pay for. I'm happy with what I pay for. But I told you, he, he asks, it's my calls whenever I call. I don't care if I have a physical or not. I know so many people that have dropped dead after having a physical.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could start making your way back, I would appreciate it. Okay, here we go. Um, Ms. Winger pulled item number nine, and now we're gonna move on to Consider an Act Upon An Ordinance Number, we're back together at ten twenty-five. Minnie, we got everything up and running? Thank you. Consider an act upon reconsideration, ordinance number 2018-0612C, to prohibit the funding of payment from the 2018 funds for the purchase of ENCODE Finance and Personnel Management Module and Integrated Government Software from Tyler Technologies and the City Manager's Sal Explorer Termination of Software Service Agreement with Tyler Technologies, May fourteenth. The mayor brought this item forward, and the reason I did was because I was unclear at the time, and I, and I believe we talked to, uh, our attorney about it, whether or not, and anybody can jump in at any time, 'cause, you know, this is an action item, um, whether or not using an anticipated breach of contract puts the city in a position to be sued for that breach of contract. And that's the reason I sent it back for council to look at it, just to answer that question. Uh, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a salesman. So I was unclear, but it, it just doesn't smell right to use, use a situation where we're going to beforehand decide that we're gonna create a situation that doesn't fund it. Now, like we've learned in other situations, there's more than one way to get down the road. So that's the only reason I brought it back for reconsideration, was to find out whether or not the process was legal. Do I have a motion to put this on the table?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
What are we doing before?
Uh, well, what I would like to know is, I'd, I'd just like to, this is a, um... What report? Okay, well, let's do this. Excuse me. Thanks, everyone, for jumping in on that. Let's move item ten to the end and go on to item eleven. Consider an act upon approval of minutes of the special city council meeting on May the twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, tabled on June twenty-sixth. Um, do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'm moved.
Mr. McCormick, thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a, I have a que...
Second.
Thank you, Douglas. Leslie, go ahead.
Okay. Um, since everybody keeps bringing this meeting up, it's really important that it be accurate. And I understood that Minnie was going to recheck the minutes of the video, but there is a very critical point on page two of three, one, two, three, fourth paragraph. Mr. Gregory restated his question regarding the legal authority or precedent to conduct a joint meeting and asked, this is critical, and asked for the names and sizes of cities which conduct such joint meetings. That has to be put in because he asked for that. City Attorney Brennan responded, "There were no statute that prohibited them from conducting a joint meeting," but refused to name the cities. That's in the video. This is critical because subsequent to that, it says, "Ms. Winger stated under the circumstances," those were the circumstances, "that he refused to name the cities." And Douglas had asked for that information. So those are the circumstances, and that information has to be in there. Okay?
Get that, Minnie?
Do we have to vote on that, or is it good enough as it stands?
Mr. Mayor.
We could vote on it as a minute.
There's some other amendments that need to be made.
Hey, go ahead.
Mrs. Scott, did you wanna?
Um, yes. On page three of three, it says that, uh, Mayor, it says, "Under the, inside the box." Um, under action, under the votes, it says that I abstained. I actually voted nay. So that needs to be changed and needs to be changed as in the following list. Under Mayor Howell requested a roll call vote. Um, I did not abstain on that vote. Um, I was a nay as well there.
Get that, Minnie?
Can we double-check that because my memory of, is not as great as everybody else's, but I seem to remember you abstaining on that thing.
I abstained on the roll call vote for adjournment. I abstained because I didn't feel the meeting was over. It had been completed.
Well, the tape will, the tape will tell whatever it does.
Well, but it should be correct.
You get that, Minnie?
Okay, and I have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
On the three of three page, under the box, Ms. Winger expressed her objection to the city attorney. I did not object to the zoning commission chairman being seated on the day. Has never objected to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do believe that both were included in the objection. Objection. I've looked at the tape again. We need to review that.
National review has been noted. Uh, Mr. Brennan, national review has been noted. Do we have to vote on, on that, or do we?
Well, it sounds like if you're gonna review and maybe change these minutes, uh, it looks like it's going back to the, to the city secretary.
The zoning commission.
She'd like to review it again.
Just, just removing in zoning commission chairman. That's the only thing I'm deleting 'cause that's not on, on the tape.
And I don't, I don't remember that to be correct. I, I remember it being both, but that's why I'm asking her to review.
So they're being tabled until the next meeting? Or just review it and resubmit it?
I'd like to change, and Ms. McLennan wants to see the tape.
Yeah, and that's fair.
Move to the next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Forgive me for being so rude and eating up there. You do not want to see me with low blood sugar.
You're right. We do not.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. Let's move on to item twelve. Consider an act upon the approval of minutes by the regular city council meeting on April tenth that was tabled on June the twelfth. Is there any, uh, go ahead, I invite a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull this item. There are a few things that I don't remember to be correct, and I have not had a chance to review the video to verify whether they're, um, they're accurate under a couple of the sections.
The item has asked to been pulled and, and addressed at the next meeting. Is there any problem with that? Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen. City manager's update. City manager will update his investigation to explore the termination of the software agreement with Tyler Technologies dated May the fourteen, two thousand eighteen, and possible action. This was brought forward by Mr. McCormick and Ms. Winger. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor. Obviously, in exploring this, we reached out to, um, Tyler to find out what the cost was for, uh, getting out of the service agreement. Uh, since we had already paid thirty-five hundred initially, uh, we are owing, according to them at the time, this was about June twenty-sixth, a remaining sixteen hundred dollars as a portion of the days entering into the service agreement, which now it's July tenth, so it's probably additional, maybe sixteen, seventeen hundred. Um, I have a letter prepared requesting to exit the service agreement. Mr. Brennan has approved and reviewed it, and, uh, it's ready to go if directed by council.
I move that we accept that by minute, by a minute order?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, this is just an update. There's not, there's no action item. Oh, it does say. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. McCormick. That's my fault. Okay, well, you wanna go ahead and speak on it, though, Mr. McCormick? Go ahead.
Are we looking for a motion now?
Uh, no, sir, because it, they're, they're not an action item. This was just to, I just...
It does say possible action.
...manager's update on investigation to explore the termination of the software with Tyler and possible action. Yes, sir. Go ahead. So you did an action, right? You had a, a motion to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second, please?
We accept the city manager's.
Okay. Go ahead. Your discussion, I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion you wanna raise, Ms. Winger? I'll surrender. I move that we accept the city manager's update on the cost to terminate the agreement, and we be authorized the payment of the additional sixteen hundred or whatever it amounts to, up to about twenty-five hundred or so. Is that what you say, Mr. Rapley?
Initially, we reached out to him on June twenty-sixth. They provide us an amount of sixteen hundred, uh, sixteen hundred. Uh, but as indicated in the letter, I've asked for, uh, any related items as of this date, July tenth, moving forward.
So is, is it sixteen hundred or twenty-five hundred, or do you have an idea?
Well, what they, what they were doing was backtracking the number of days we so far entered into the service agreement. So they took into account the forty-three days so far, so roughly going back, you know, two weeks might be added on. That's why I'm saying it could be anywhere to sixteen to eighteen hundred. That's why I'm saying it could be anywhere to $1,600 to $1,800, somewhere in that range.
Total?
Total, yeah.
Okay, well, I move that we authorize Mr. Rapley to expend that money to exit the contract. Okay. By minute order.
It is. Ms. Scott, do you have any comments or questions on this, please?
I almost feel like these two are so interrelated, it's hard to...
Number 10, the reconsideration, is basically the same thing. If we're making, if we're taking action on this...
If we're taking action on this, it's like...
Well, this is an action item, so we can take an action, and it would take care of number 10.
But we haven't discussed 10 and the possible breach of contract under 10.
Okay. Well, you can talk, Mr. Brennan, can we talk about that now on item 10, or do we need to go back before we actually?
Well, it looks like 13 can solve the problem.
That's what I see. So, you want to go ahead and talk about it? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, that's my concern, is that even if we terminate this, and they're happy with the funds that, you know, pay this amount, that they're not gonna come back later after us for a breach of agreement. And that's why I wanted to ask Mr. Brennan is, you know, is that a possibility that we could end up spending more than if we just purchased the software if they ended up pursuing us under litigation?
Well, I think it's wise not to pass item 10, because it, it's a built-in breach of contract wording in there. But if you leave 10 alone and move to 13, which is basically the city manager saying that he's been trying to achieve an amicable settlement with them to terminate the contract, and they've given him a figure that apparently is being recommended by the motion made or arranged that fits in it, and as long as they agree to accept that and terminate the contract, you know, to where it's over and settled, I don't think there's a problem with that.
My, my problem is that number 10 was reconsideration of an ordinance that's already been passed by the city to not fund the contract and basically anticipatorily breach this. And so, we already have an ordinance that has been passed by council, and number 10 is a reconsideration to not have that ordinance. So, I... Well, yes, and so, the majority of council voted to breach a contract, not fund it.
Actually, once, once we settle up with, with them on, on whatever amount they've asked for, none of that's gonna matter anymore. That, that kinda wipes out everything. It's, you know, like...
Well, it, it doesn't, though, because...
Well, I'm sorry, but I disagree with you, Ms. McLenn. I say, once you have an agreement to settle, to settle a complaint on the contract, that settles any, any relative, any related complaint also.
Maybe it settles that issue, but it doesn't settle protecting our citizens' money. It's leaving it open. We've been told by the auditors that there are three ways that there could be potential for fraud in our books. I've been asked to be a signer on the bank accounts, and I don't want that out there. I don't want that open. I don't want that open for anyone who's a signer on our bank accounts. And besides, we just passed, council just made our finance director a department head tonight. And one of the things under section 2-191, under section 2, for department head, is to keep informed as to the latest practices in their particular field and inaugurate with the approval of the city manager such new practices as appear to be of benefit and service, benefit to the service and to the public. And something like Incode, where you button up problems with our finances...
Objection, the discussion is out of order. That doesn't relate to the matter under consideration.
Well, I think it directly relates, because this has to do with the finances of the city and protecting our citizens' money.
Hold on. Okay, thank you, Ms....
May I speak?
Sure.
Actually, one of the reasons we're doing this is that there is going to be no protection for the city if we go through with this until after January, whereas by canceling this contract, we can start moving now to fix the problem. We do not have to wait for Incode to show up in January and, and pay them, as Mr. McCormick had brought out before he was elected, who knows what, to bring people in here to train everybody.
Alright.
So, basically... Basically, council wants to spend $5,100 for nothing. Just throw it out. Just throw it out into the wind.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
I had a question, Mr. Rapley. It keeps being brought up that, well, this $100,000 cost, which would be spent over the next, was it five-year contract, I understand, with them? The purchase of the software and paying the fee for...
It was a five-year contract.
Five years.
A one-time cost for the software and then hosting fees over the five years.
So, it was $31,500 for the software, and then the annual fee for five years, which totals up to this $100,000 cost. We went into the agreement with the software with the understanding that we found holes in our audit. My question, which, it's getting late, and I'm trying to get this, was there additional fees and costs for them to come install the software and do the training? Because Mr. McCormick keeps saying we have these unknown costs out there. Or was that part of the original contract with Incode as part of our $31,500 that we paid for the software? And our yearly fee, is there additional fees for them to come install the software? That Mr. McCormick's saying, "We don't know how much it's gonna be, and they could charge us whatever." Or is that included in that package cost, that deal?
No, the, the purchase of the software was a one-time, and then the implementation and conversion is partly their team coming in to help make that happen into our system. Now, there would be travel and training costs incurred, but they didn't have a good amount till a project manager was assigned to be able to evaluate our system, to take and figure out how long it would take to convert that software. So, it was slightly an unknown factor, but there would have been travel cost and training, you know, they ballparked anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000, I believe.
Okay, so they did give, did give us an estimate cost on that, $4,000 to $5,000 to do that, to come, set it up, convert all of our files over and everything like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that was...
And again...
I'd point out that that ballpark figure is just a ballpark figure. It's not in writing anywhere, and the document we signed gives them the right to, to charge for their services when they give them, and didn't specify any, any amounts.
Well, they did specify amounts, because if you read the contract that was presented to us by Incode, they had a daily fee for the person to come. They had a maximum that they could charge on a stipend per hotel night for each night, and it's maximum stipend they could charge for food for each night, each night. So, if they were gonna go over by two days, or three days, or four days, we do have those numbers in the contract on how much in addition it would cost to however many days they estimated or quoted, that those numbers were clearly laid out in the contract.
Call a question.
Thank you. Question is called? I, I have a quick question, Skip, right before we, right before we do that. Don't we have to deal with the reconsideration, the consideration, the reconsideration whether we're gonna do it or not? Or does the, does the motion and the second override that by just saying we're not gonna do it?
I think it can be pulled without, without any consequences. Mr. Brennan, give us a good opinion on that. What do you think, Mike?
Well, Mayor, I'd suggest that you just pull number 10, and if nobody objects, then move on to 13 and solve the problem.
There we go. Move on to 13, and we're gonna solve this. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second on the table, and we have, discussion has been completed, I believe. We have no, we have a call for the vote, and there is, nobody signed up for this. So? All in favor? All opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right. It was a three to one to one. All right. The next item is the city manager's update on costs associated with preparation of financial reports. Assisting auditor, persons employed or contracted to work with the preparation of reports, and expla-